I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2016. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Belval.
Yes.
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marcus.
Here.
Myers.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Glad to have you with us at the start of another school year. We'll begin, as always, with the superintendent's report. Hello, Dr. Messenger.
Good evening, President Fuqua, members of the board, and those in the audience, and those viewing in. So, welcome. And we are now on the other side of the start of the school year, and I'll talk a bit about that as we get going here. First of all, I'd just like to mention, as you know, our Phase 1 schools have been going under significant construction. There've been a couple news articles around that. We've provided you, as members of the board, briefing on that. We're very pleased with the progress over the summer months and the scope of $55 million plus of work completed. Executive Director for Bond Projects, Rob Price, is in the audience this evening and has led that work along with Don Orr and the team. So, anyway, as I mentioned last time, we are planning some visitations in probably October for board members and others who might want to get out and see some of the projects, both those that are the new construction, brand-new, and those are some significant remodels. And so, I know you're hearing some about that. I just want to mention there's been, have been a few comments, maybe concerns, about indoor air quality related to schools that are still very much in construction. And probably the school that's most impacted by construction today is Whittier Elementary School. A delay in the original work led to some postponement of the work along line. It appears most of the work will be completed in that building, on the interior of the building, by around the 1st of October. There will still be campus work to do that will probably go into next spring and summer. So, there are areas of the building that are sealed while construction continues. I visited last week. All students are in class. All things are working. Staff's been incredibly flexible, parents very supportive, and students resilient, as you'd expect. We are doing air quality tests in that building. Things are at the good or moderate range. We also had a question about Boulder High School because of some significant work there in the library and beyond, a whole new air handling system in that building. Again, we tested that building. It's all in the good range. We'll continue to monitor that, certainly respond to any questions or concerns. There are a lot of new products, flooring, cabinetry, a lot of things that emit odors, just like a new car when they're put in. And so, we're aware of that, and so, as is the staff. And some of it is getting all the air handling systems working to standard, and so we can purge the air in the evenings and things. So, anyway, I just want you to know we're monitoring that close under Rob Price's supervision and Chris Wilderman. We have, or just in the process today, maybe sent out a communicate to all parents and faculty, and then a press release to the community around the indoor air quality district committee. As you know, we formed an air quality committee, KC-specific, last spring that's continuing their work with the commitment we had started at the beginning of the year, a call for applications for the district indoor air quality committee. And so, under the guidance of Susan Cousins and team, we're going to send those communications out, link to the website that provides a lot of information around the indoor air quality information. So, folks are so inclined and want to serve. We need teachers and school leaders and parents and community members, beyond parents. So, this is intended to be an ongoing committee, as opposed to the KC committee, which is intended to be short in duration. So, it could be that if we can't appease all the interest, we hope there's that much interest. The district indoor air quality committee will probably have some rotation and terms and all that. Meeting dates and everything will be set once the committee's formed. That committee will come back to the board for approval once we finalize the applications. The indoor air quality project that's underway under the leadership of Dr. Richard Shaughnessy of the University of Tulsa is in progress. I believe there was a media article just last weekend on some of the work that's continuing with that. As you might recall, when you approved that project last spring, this is in partnership with Harvard Medical School, Colorado University, CU Boulder, and so, we are starting Phase 2, school testing. We are, there will be a summary report of the findings of Phase 1. I think that came up in that recent conversation. And so, Richard and the team are working with our staff to pull that together. So, once it's complete, I would guess, soon, we'll provide that to you. So, no major concerns, or we'd be dealing with those, but we'll provide some summary data on the Phase 1 schools. That'll be the baseline data. Then they'll come back and do post-analysis on the air quality following the construction. We'll wait till the construction work is complete and all the air handling systems are recommissioned and ready to go. I would just say, a really great start to the school year. Over 31,000 students appeared, and most of them where we thought they would be. There were always a few surprises. And so, usually until Labor Day, we still kind of work through the process of identifying students who aren't here, where did they go exactly, and work with their families to make sure their student records are where they belong. Then, of course, new student enrollees that arrive that we didn't always expect, but we take care of them and get all of our classes. We're still doing some staffing adjustments in response, kind of a typical start-of-school activity. There is more online enrollment, a free and reduced lunch application process. There's more work to be done online now versus paper pencil. So, that's, you know, our system moving forward. So, we set up a help center in this building this year and ran it out of the flight staff room. Prior to the start of school, we had a really good response of parents, families that just needed a little help, either they didn't have access to technology, or even when they did, they still needed a little help, like we do sometimes up here. And so, really, you know, Spanish and English-speaking assistants to help with that. So, it was very well received and appreciated. We'll probably expand that for the start of school next year and maybe in more locations if, as the need dictates that. So, thanks to Leslie Stafford, Mike Wilcox, and all who were involved in setting the help center up and making that happen. So, and again, I just want to extend, on behalf of the leadership, my appreciation to the teachers and the principals and the support staff. I did this once. It's been a while ago since I was a principal and a teacher, but it's a pretty hard push that last two weeks, particularly for buildings under construction. So, many evening hours and weekends invested by our staff getting ready to receive the children, and I'm sure that they had parent and volunteers right alongside them doing that. But as I walked the schools, we got on all the campuses the first two days and visited them, things are good. We're doing a little problem solving, but all is good. So, nice start to the school year. I'd be glad to answer, Sam, any questions about those topics or any others.
Thank you, Dr. Messenger. Questions for the superintendent? Kathy?
Thanks, Bruce, for getting the school year off to a good start with the staff and teachers. I was just wondering if you could give a brief update on what's going on with Uni Hill? And, because my understanding is there was a meeting that was canceled that was supposed to take place, just kind of trying to, if you have any status on that?
We're trying to reschedule. You know, we thought that wouldn't be a big deal to pull that group of people together. We did it in May. We thought we could do it again. We tried in June. We tried again in August. We decided we just needed to get everybody back to work, you know, off of summer travel and vacation. So, we're in process of setting that convening back together to kind of plan next steps. Again, I really see, I don't want to overforecast this, because obviously it'll be the group to decide. I really see one set of conversations continuing around the potential property acquisition, development, to see about the feasibility of that, which I'd say is still very much under review, to see if it's even feasible. And in partnership with that, to build on the continuing partnership between CU and BVSD and work we do with education and students together. And that won't be limited just to Uni Hill and New Vista. I mean, the property conversation probably will focus around the topics we've visited there. But this, building the partnership, as you know, we have a new dean for the College of Ed with Lori Shepherd's retirement from the deanship. Lori's still on faculty, so she's still working with us. But, you know, to build on that partnership overall, again, with, on the university campus and beyond. So, that, so it's really going to probably be complementary, but two prongs of conversation. So, I anticipate a September-ish time we'll finally land on a date and pull people back together, and I'll keep you updated as we go forward. And we'll send communication to the parent community as well.
Other questions? Comments? Richard?
Thank you to Dr. Messenger. A neighbor of mine has a 9th grader at Centaurus High School, and he stopped me and asked questions around the progress of construction at Centaurus High School, because when he went in there, he noticed broken windows and I don't know whatnot. Is there any time that we're going to get a progress report on Centaurus High School?
So, Centaurus Campus, what's under construction right now on the Centaurus Campus is the stadium, the field complex, which is shared both with Monarch and Centaurus. And so, if you're out and about, stop by. Some major work there. It looks really great. New track, new field, other facilities around that portion of the campus. It's going to be a really nice shared facility. So, on the building proper, that work is still finalizing design and construction, well, planning for that, but the push-off will be spring and summer of '17. So, if there are broken windows or whatever on the campus, obviously those need to be addressed. But the actual work on the building itself and the interior of the building is really scheduled for, well, a little less than a year from now. So, yes, we'll give updates. But really, the focus on that campus has been the field and stadium complex.
Tina?
Yeah, thanks for the update. I had two comments. We heard from someone from the Twin Lakes Group.
Yes.
Last week. My question is, one, when do we think we would vote on that, were that proposal to go through the different Boulder groups? And the second is, can we have a discussion that really talks about enrollment trends in Boulder City? Because land is, I mean, is impossible to get.
Right.
In that area. And I want to make sure that we're making the right decision if we do decide to give up that piece of land and that we really can't foresee any other need.
Yeah.
At any other time. Because it's, all you hear about is you just can't get land. And so, I would, I'd love to have some kind of in-depth discussion as a board about that.
Yeah, so it's been a while since we've talked about what, well, I'll just call surplus property. There isn't much of it that we have. That's one of them. There's some over here we've talked about. It would be our intent to bring that back, that discussion, to the board. And then also, annually, Glenn Segrew, our planner, does an update on enrollment and trends. And so, it would probably make sense that we would kind of wrap those, at least that part of the conversation together, because we are too watching some enrollment trends on live birth data and, you know, affordable housing for families with children in the Boulder City proper area. So, and we're seeing some significant growth in some areas we didn't fully anticipate, and some less growth in other areas. So, how much of that's being affected by property prices or values could be? So, I've asked Susan Cousins and Glenn to prepare an update for the board on the Twin Lakes that would lay out kind of an update where we are and some timelines associated with that. And Susan just sent me a note today and said they're starting work on that. So, I think soon we'll give you, provide that. And then I think we could, through agenda setting, set a date by which what decisions need to be made and what would be the timeline to do those. So, as you know, the conversation to date is really about the zoning or the potential annexation of the land, so.
So, in that conversation, could we talk about where you saw hotspots in Boulder areas specifically? Not, you know, I'm thinking more about that area rather than Lafayette area.
Mostly East County is where we're sitting.
Mostly East County, right.
Mostly.
And then, my other question is, do we think that we anticipate any charter school applications?
We're still working with the one on a dual-language school. Leslie Stafford and I have been in conversation with the folks working to organize that. It's been, I think, a couple of months, probably a month and a half since we've had that. I don't know, Leslie, if you have any new information from what we've shared before?
No, I haven't heard anything lately.
Yeah. So, we don't anticipate anything coming in this fall, based on what we know, but, good.
Other questions? Shelley?
Sorry, what language is that?
Well, what language do we think we're on?
I think it's Hebrew.
Hebrew, that last we heard. They were exploring some other languages, but Hebrew is probably what we've heard most.
You heard about that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, a year and a half, yeah. Same group, yeah.
So, I'm glad to hear that we're being responsive to air quality concerns, because I got a couple of emails from BHS.
Yeah.
Boulder High Parents. So, I'm glad to hear that we're on that and that you've actually tested and it's good.
Yeah, we've had folks on the ground there and run a series of tests in locations. And, you know, obviously, if you have a chance, ask them to go back through their principal if they, or to contact our office, and we'll make sure Chris Wilderman and Rob are, they may be already on it, but make sure they're tracking it. I mean, generally, if it's under construction, we're checking it. Some of our buildings are done-done, so, you know, we're going to check those as we recommission the buildings. But when they're still under construction, then we want to make sure that's safe.
Yeah, well, on the subject of safety, as you all know, we've been getting letters and receiving updates on the petition that's going around to requesting districts in the state of Colorado to not allow their students to go to Rocky Flats for field trips or for any other reason. So, I just think that given the uncertainty around, you know, the long-term health effects of inhaling even a molecule of plutonium, that we might want to consider erring, you know, on the side of caution and finding a way to say to the district that we don't want our kids going there. So, I'm not sure the best way to do that, whether it needs to be a policy, whether it needs to be a resolution, whether it needs to be just a motion to direct Bruce to send out a message to the schools that we want to prohibit that kind of activity. But I think we need to have a board discussion about that, and if the majority is in agreement, I think we ought to do something, given the level of concern, so.
Yeah, we had a somewhat brief discussion at agenda setting and didn't quite land anywhere particularly specific, other than we thought board members would want more information if we were going to consider something like that. So, we can, I don't know, Bruce, if any language could be suggested by staff, or how we, how would you recommend proceeding on the staff part of this? And then, in agenda setting, we can calendar it for either a work session or part of a regular meeting.
So, we have taken some time to look at existing board policy that might give firm guidance on this issue, not just Rocky Flats, but any location such. And there isn't much, to be honest. I mean, general safety and well-being of students, good decision-making, things you would expect. So, you know, maybe, Sam, the best option would be for us to visit within cabinet. I mean, maybe the, we could set, do, draft some guidelines around field, we have guidelines around field trips. We just don't have guidelines specifically that address with locations to visit or not visit, and what criteria we would make judgments around that, because that's just a location. There are probably others that we would advise at least some level of scrutiny to determine whether it's a safe location because of other risk factors, not necessarily plutonium. So, you know, maybe we could do that and bring that back for the board for discussion and keep it at the guidelines level so that it can be flexible. But, and then we could give guidance to our instructional staff, our instructional directors and principals and teachers around that. And then, at least we'd have, give some guidance on it, because presently, I think we trust good judgment around it. But I, you know, we're not finding anything specifically that addresses it. So, not, again, not just Rocky Flats, but just general decision-making around it.
So, if you could bring that back to agenda setting?
Bring guidelines, just to see if we've hit the mark with that.
And then we will calendar a discussion on it and see if that meets the concerns of folks who don't want us to go to Rocky Flats. If it can also encompass some other sites, too, that would be okay. Yeah, Shelley?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to have a policy that addresses more than just Rocky Flats.
Right.
Because this could happen anytime, anywhere. But the concern I have about just, you know, spending a lot of time figuring this out and coming forth with a new policy, like, that takes us a while to do that. Is there any realistic concern that our kids are going there? And could we put like a temporary moratorium on it until we do this so that?
Because you're talking, we are, we did explore this at the late summer, and we don't have any evidence that we have students going there for field trips or educational purposes. But, yeah, I mean, we certainly could look at a short-term and a longer-term solution. Where we get most guidance on field trips and activities are from our insurance company. Things you ought not do with children, for liability reasons, but also safety reasons. And so, there's probably some guidance we've received there as well that could be incorporated with this, which, again, is probably good common sense. So, something like a heads-up to building administrators, you know, the board is going to be trying to develop a policy. Then we could tease out if there's anything there that we don't know about, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I would hate to have five, five field trips happen while we're talking about this.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Anything else, Shelley? No, anybody else? Okay. With that, we'll conclude the superintendent's report and move to our next agenda item, which is public hearing and public participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes, please. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium. It turns green when your two minutes begins, turns yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turns red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. We have two speakers on agenda items this evening. Rachel Cohen, oh, and Rachel Cohen has been given an additional two minutes from Yitz Cohen. So, Ms. Cohen, are you with us?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah, she's gone.
Oh, making her way, okay.
(mimicking child crying)
It's got the family. Yeah. Good evening.
Thank you for taking my comments. I'm going to start out just with a quote, "That a good educator leads her students to find information, but doesn't tell them what to think about it." It's a quote I think a lot of us have heard. And I think it's a quote that doesn't just apply to educating our students, but it applies to educating our families and in engaging them and giving them the same trust and respect that we assume that they're giving you and that they're giving all of our district, its staff at the most local level up through the administration. We're an ecosystem, and sometimes, unfortunately, that ecosystem does have some issues with regards to trust and with regards to respect. I have had some serious concerns on a variety of issues. You've probably seen a million emails coming in from me here and there. I don't sleep enough, so I have time to read. And on the SEL assessment, what I would like to see is that we take some time to step back and make sure, even if we think that the SEL assessment is appropriate and the best option and the best use of resources, that we also have a specific plan, that we know whether or not we're going to be buying into curriculums, that we know that we're completely transparent with our families, that we are absolutely assured that we have worked with DAC, and that we've enabled our families to be able to have the same input that we allege we want them to have, that we have the same engagement that we want them to have. I'm not necessarily an opponent of socio-emotional learning. I think that it has an important part in our daily lives. I have my kids at a Montessori school, because Maria Montessori engaged the whole child in her educational process, and that's why I'm thrilled that we have a focused school. I wish it went higher, because quite honestly, that would be my choice for my kids. I think it's the best option possible. But right now, we aren't necessarily doing these things with our families. It seems like we're opening up more need to buy the third-party products, and we're undercutting potentially great innovative work by our, by our teachers. And it seems that, in many ways, we're chilling the relationship with our families by not respecting their input and creating alternate pathways and ensuring there's transparency, and that families have choices when it comes to whether or not their children are taking assessments, which, depending on the day, depending on the circumstance of what's going on with them, is going to attach to their record and is going to potentially harm them in the long term. Now, I did get some good feedback from one of our administrators, and I think it clarified some things with regards to DESA, and I'm not necessarily fully uncomfortable with DESA, but I would say this. One note that was sent to me today was that the outcome, if there is a miss, if there's a consequence of a low score and a misidentification of need, is not that there is no potential negative outcome for that student, especially when it's applied to their student record. And so, what I would ask is, I've sent you all a list of things that if you're going to adopt this, that, first of all, you take time to think about that list, but that you make sure there's full transparency, that families have absolute knowledge of what their children are being asked of, and that they have the ability to ensure that if they have a question about this being in their children's record, that it is somehow separated from that record, so that it is, in fact, for the best use possible in our district and not going to be just more data gathering, following our kids for an unknown period of time. Because whether we like it or not, there's a 20-year span on these kids. And my kids are the ones that are going to suffer when they go for college admissions or when they go for a job. And so, I really hope that your legacy is that you respect me and trust me and other parents like me to make good decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Okay, guys. And I apologize for the massive interruption.
That's okay.
We're in the witching hour.
Have a good rest of the evening. That concludes the speakers on agenda items. We have one speaker signed up on a non-agenda items, Fafi Mendez. Ms. Mendez, are you with us? Good evening, welcome.
Members of the board, Superintendent Messenger, thank you so much for an opportunity to be here today. As Mr. President said, my name's Fafi Mendez. I'm here with the "Yes on SCFD" campaign. We are a group of close to 300 organizations, including school districts, civic organizations, businesses, and cultural organizations, that will be asking the voters of the seven counties to please vote "yes" on issue 4B. Whether we're talking about ballerinas or butterflies, Mozart, or Monet, spiders, space, history, theater, botany, this is what the SCFD is all about. It is about cultural accessibility to all of us, from all of the seven counties that are currently represented, the organizations, over 300 organizations that are supported. That one penny on every $10 purchase allows over 300 organizations in that seven county to, to be supported and brings culture to, to all of us. The SCFD makes possible world-class exhibits, programming, and educational experiences. In fact, in Boulder County alone, over 106 organizations or schools are currently using and experiencing educational program, either in cultural facilities or in their schools. The SCFD services over 15 million individuals. That is a 95% increase from 1989, when the SCFD first started. It allows for organizations to provide over 100 free days and educates close to 4 million kids. The SCFD is a huge return on investment, bringing in economic activity, jobs, and, and other issues. The renewal is going to be on your ballot. It's issue 4B, and we would ask all of you to please support it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes public participation. Thanks, everybody, for coming and participating. We move now to board communication. Board members, who would like to begin? Don't be shy. Nobody has anything to say? Richard?
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen, for your presentation. She's gone already. Those children don't lack any social-emotional difficulties in my mind. Strong kids. And thank you for the presentation on the SCFD. I have a question. Did anybody from the school district attend that truancy meeting that they had at the Justice Center today?
Yeah, did you attend?
I did.
Yeah. We had several staff there.
And could we get an update on that meeting?
Sure, we'd prepare, we're glad to prepare some.
Yeah, I'd like to find out what was going on, because I was planning on going. I couldn't get there, so.
Yeah.
I'm just curious to see what was discussed and what was the issue behind all that meeting that you had today.
Other comments? Board members? Jenny?
So, first of all, I'd just like to say that this is important, and think about the county ballgame that's coming up, and I think it would be good for us to send, I mean, we can all go, and there's programming that's worthwhile. I think that there's sort of a deadline on hotel reservations, and since it is in Fort Collins, that might be something for us to think about. But we also need to make sure that we have a voting representative, because it's when they put their legislative platform into, they vote on the legislative platform for the upcoming legislative session. So, I'd just like to remind us that we need to make sure that happens. And then, I'd like to thank the public speakers who came tonight and to assure you, I was actually on the cultural council for the county of Brimfield several years ago, and actually on the cultural council for the county of Brimfield several years ago and I think, and I've also witnessed in our schools, the work, the good work of the scientific and cultural facilities district, that touring art program is really very nice. So I have every intention of supporting SCFD when it comes up for renewal. I think that it's really improved the quality of life in our community, but I mean, that's just my personal opinion, I can't speak for the whole board, but I urge all of you to support it. And then I'd like to just say that I was able to visit Cole Elementary today, which as many people know is my children's, it's my, sort of my home school. It's where I started in Boulder Valley as a volunteer and I love Cole Elementary. I still love Cole Elementary and I can assure you that we've got wonderful stuff. If Cole, I'm sure that Cole is not unique in the fact that there's just wonderful stuff going on there. For, I don't know if everybody saw it or not, but as a way of orienting students this fall to norms of behavior within Cole Elementary, what's appropriate behavior in the classroom, what's appropriate behavior in the office, they've set up a Pokemon Go game. So they had kids running all over, well, not running because they were behaving, but walking all over the school in groups today with their iPads, using it to call up the, and I can't explain to you how Pokemon Go works, but they all seem to know, you know, calling up little lectures on what's appropriate behavior in the different spots that they had Pokemon Go figures that they could capture. So it was very clever and a great use of, a great, a great different way to sort of get across the same rules that, the same norm setting that kids, that teachers and staff have to do every year with kids. So it was really fun. They were, all these kids were really having fun and one of them showed me how to, how to find one of them and listen to one of the little lectures. And they were also having fun guessing who'd recorded the different lectures that they were calling up with their Pokemon Go stuff. And then I'd also like to comment that Cole is not in the, not, you know, not, doesn't have any bond work going on now and eventually they'll get some innovation space. And so I asked the principal about that and where they were in the bond and what, and that sort of thing, and he goes, "Well, you know, you don't need a building to innovate." And so we're doing, and so he showed me some of the rooms where they're doing really great innovation at Cole. One of the teachers had turned her whole class into gestation. She didn't have any specific seating assignment, she just had stations for the kids to seat themselves at and was sort of norming that for the kids. It was a new experience and they were really excited about the work that this particular teacher was going to do and then share with the rest of the staff. So I liked what he said about not having to have a new building to innovate, but having innovation going on anyway. And I really would applaud that teacher and the whole school for supporting that kind of work with our kids and, you know, doing the, doing the hard work it takes to make school engaging for kids and to make it a great place for kids. So.
Anything else, board members? Shelley?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Rachel, wherever she is, for coming out tonight because, I mean, we know how passionate she is because of the letters we receive and it really takes a lot of commitment to do what she's doing, you know, with all those children and to come and make the commitment to come tonight. I think that that, you know, really shows how concerned she is about this issue and I'm looking forward to discussing it later. And I also want to thank the person from SCFD for coming forward. I'm really involved with the Colorado Chautauqua Association and we have benefited so much from SCFD and I know that we are all out there, you know, doing our best to support this initiative and I wish you luck.
Anything else, board members?
If not, Dr. Messenger, I'll just add my thanks to you and the staff for the Help Center. You know, I happened to be at the Ed Center to see that buzzing with activity and I think it's a great idea to help our families through the enrollment processes, the support system processes. So I don't know whose idea it was, but great idea and we appreciate the staff's efforts at the Help Center. Thanks to Ms. Cohen for her comments on SEL assessment and thanks to representatives from the SCFD Yes campaign. We appreciate your efforts on behalf of Arts and Culture in Metro Denver. And with that, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is an information item, one of our regular success effect strategic plan updates, this one on innovation and ed tech professional development. Dr. Messenger?
Great. So, thank you, members of the board. Jenny, thank you for queuing this up for us. So, and not, not request I made of her, but it, Jenny's comments are in line with, the reason we put this together for this evening was that last year during a board discussion, the question was, well, is it just our exemplar schools that will have innovative practices and what about other schools and how will that be fostered and what guidance, what support, what professional development will we as a school district put in place as we go forward? As you know, there's money allocated for every school around innovation and much more going on around that. So we feel really fortunate that the timing of the bond passage in November 2014 and really at the same time launching our work around the success effect, our strategic plan, so that the work that we're doing internally around professional development and guidance and coaching and working with schools and school communities around innovation, broad definition of innovation, really complements the intended outcomes that you incorporated in the goals as we had those approved with the vision, mission, values, and goals over two years ago now. So this evening, we have scheduled for you a presentation by Kipony Lytkak, who is our Director of Innovation, and Kelly Sane, who's the Director for Ed Tech, Educational Technology. So they work together on numerous projects and also do independent work as well. But this seems like a really good time to share with you the work that's going on around innovation in the school district, how it relates to our strategic plan and because we're at the front end of kind of a long journey with this. And one of the things we want to showcase when you have a chance to visit schools for a variety of reasons, but particularly when we do some hosted visitation this fall and some of the new construction work we're doing, one of the things we'll feature is the work around innovation, not just the physical plant, but the work around it. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Kipony, Lytkak, and Kelly Sane, who will walk us through some information on innovation in the Boulder Valley School District. Thank you.
Thank you. President Fuqua, Superintendent Messenger, and board members, we're really happy to be here. I'm Kelly Sane and I'm the Director of Educational Technology.
And I'm Kipony Lytkak and I'm the Director of Educational Innovation here for BVSD. So innovation, ed tech, professional development supports our innovative teaching and learning practices here in BVSD, as described in the success effect, BVSD's innovation guiding principles, and the IST standards for students and teachers. The instructional shifts that BVSD teachers and leaders are making are complex and require time and facilitated learning experiences that model what our educators aspire to see implemented in their classrooms and schools. We're missing our visual.
Hopefully, our visual will come up and just, yay! So ed tech and innovation teams support the success effect through educator growth and development by providing 95 different professional learning opportunities for teachers and leaders through the 2015-16 school year. These events included district-wide professional development opportunities that were open to any educator who chose to participate, as well as professional learning communities that were designed to deliver specific goals and needs for a group of teachers or cohort members. Innovation team provided over 35 hours of targeted professional development for our Phase 1 and our Phase 2 schools, and we also provided over 76 hours of learning opportunities for our district leaders as they implemented the innovation work for bond schools. And the ed tech team provided over 250 hours of professional learning communities to all grade levels in schools for the 2015-16 school year. Targeted learning groups included our 21st century cohorts, one-to-web professional development for teachers and parents, teacher librarians, and our leadership cohort.
So we are consistently and explicitly aligning our work in innovation and ed tech to the broader work of the success effect. We are decreasing the digital divide by providing digital resources to our staff and students. 84% of our leaders have connected their learning to the success effects vision of graduating successful, curious, lifelong learners. The infographic here also shares other connections to the work of our strategic plan and includes some photos of our adult and student learners as they engage in 21st century learning. We believe strongly in empowering our teachers who are pioneering challenging, engaging, and meaningful learning opportunities in BVSD. Almost all of our full-day district training events were facilitated by teacher leaders in partnership with ed tech and innovation teams. Specific examples of these district-wide learning opportunities include our digital innovative learning days, which were held in early August, the Google Apps Education, Google Apps for Education Summit, which was held last October, and Innovate at BVSD, which was held in June, and finally, our 21st century leadership and teacher cohorts, which were held throughout the year.
We are really proud of the work in BVSD and are excited to embrace the leadership role for our peer districts. Two of our largest professional development opportunities, the Google Apps for Education Summit, as well as the Innovate at BVSD, were intended from educators all across the front range. When we look at our survey results, they show the excitement that is generated from our professional development sessions, specifically with the direction that our district is headed by embracing future-ready learning environments and spaces. It's important that when we look at, and it's important that as we make every attempt to make sure that we are working with equitable distribution across all of our opportunities for our, for our teachers and our leaders. So we have offered opportunities from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. It encompasses our teachers, our leaders, and other professional development groups. We're excited about our growth, not only in the number of offerings of professional development, but also in the number of participants who have attended.
So as we move forward into the 2016 and 17 school year, we are looking forward to continually increasing these opportunities that support professional learning. We will continue to host personalized school PD, as well as provide district-wide events such as the Future Ready Google App Summit and Innovate at BVSD. We will also add an additional innovation cohort this year, which will combine our teachers and leaders into teams, in which we hope they will learn, grow, and support future-ready learning for our schools. We've included links at the bottom of the infographic to both the ed tech and innovation websites, should you like to see further information and stay up to date with our future plans.
Is there comments regarding the sharing of that? And just to remind you all, you have the PowerPoint presentation and another document attached to the agenda.
Great. Thank you both. And thanks, Dr. Messenger. Questions or comments? Nope. Yes, Jenny?
So, I may need a little help raising this question. How do we know it's working? I mean, we have, I mean, I appreciate the feedback from teachers about, you know, they like the PD and stuff, but how do we, how do we know that we're really transferring these practices to the classroom?
So I'm going to ask Kipony to come back up and maybe Kelly would like to join her as well. One of the things that we've incorporated, this is where, and we'll talk more about this as the year unfolds, but the Unified Improvement Plans for every school and the school district, the alignment with that, and the alignment with that work with the strategic plan, the innovation thread pulls through that. So as a part of the innovation planning, school by school relates to what they plan to do, what they hope to accomplish, and how it is they'll measure that. And it may not be traditional measures. They, our presenters may want to elaborate a bit on that because again, I think if we expect different kinds of things from our students, then we probably need to find different ways that we assess their progress towards that. But Kipony and Kelly, you want to add to that?
Sure. I can speak a little bit to that. We are working very closely with the schools in designing some of their innovative learning spaces to not have it, Jenny, as you were mentioning, be just about the space, but really about the teaching and learning and the impact that we're seeing on that in those spaces. So part of our work really is working with leaders and teachers to develop specific learning outcomes, next steps, targets they have for implementation throughout this PD that we're hoping we can then take those measurements and share back with you all and with the public, how this work is really impacting teaching and learning. So part of the work of this innovation cohort we're looking to design this fall will be focused on what you're asking, on taking some specific learning outcomes and thinking of ways that we may measure those. As Dr. Messenger mentioned, those may be things like student portfolios, for example, examples of student work, student videos or interviews, some more kind of non-traditional type assessments or measurements that would really begin to show us what impact our innovation work is having on student growth and achievement in our schools. So that's certainly part of the plan for this year moving forward. We've gathered feedback in the past, as you mentioned, about the effectiveness of the PD, and I think we've been able to see impact through observation and through some of the portfolios that we've implemented with teachers. Kelly can talk a little bit about that, too. But that we've seen some of that impact come back to us post-implementation of taking their learning from a professional standpoint to implementation in the classroom. So something that we're striving constantly to consider and I think we'll have some really good plans in place moving forward, as well as some of what we've already done previously.
And another measure is that our teachers are the ones who are helping to lead this professional development. So as they've gone through professional development with us, then they turn around and lead professional development at their own schools and/or bring it to a larger PD event that we're having. And every single one of the events that we've held have been from our teacher leaders who have gone through different cohorts and they are in turn, leading that instruction with other teachers.
So, so some specific example, I mean, I don't, I probably am putting you on the spot, so I apologize, but if you can think of a specific example that comes to mind that I didn't, of how, what, like a lesson plan or something, something that a teacher has changed, you know, something that would be an example of that?
You go ahead and then I'll add on.
So, on our website, every single one of our teacher leaders actually has a portfolio and their lesson plans that they have done as part of their research, and they have to implement and post that up there, as well as what the, not only just the intended lesson plan, but what is the student outcome. So I have to see what the result was and what was the shared evidence of learning from the student has to be posted on their website as well. So they vary all over the place, you know, from kindergarten all the way through our 12th grade, but that was one of the outcomes, was we asked that not only do you show the lesson plan, but you show the implementation and the student result.
And our work this year in innovation, specifically around the innovation projects, will mirror that to have the specific outcomes listed with the measurable results, too.
Well, and I'll just comment, that reflects what I saw at Cole today, was that there was, you know, they talked about the teacher on their technology cohort, bringing stuff back, and teachers who were innovating, sharing with the whole staff the successes they were having in a way that I think hopefully will, will create positive outcomes for students in Cole in the future.
Tina?
On the slide that talks about, the blue slide with the flowers on the, the white lines. So just, it mentions that 51% of teachers and 81% of leaders said it directly impacted talent in the area of educator growth and development. What's the, what do you think is the discrepancy in the perceptions between teachers and leaders when they think about this?
So, right now, I'm not sure what the description, you know, description is between those two. When we look at our comments, we could, you know, verify from each one of our teachers. Sometimes it's also, if I'm attending a professional development and I'm a PE teacher and I'm a music teacher versus I'm an art teacher, sometimes that's hard to differentiate between them. So that would be one thing that I could point at. And/or, am I getting at the level that I need? Am I addressing at the beginning of the level? Am I on a walker or runner or an advanced group, an elementary group, those kinds of pieces.
And I should ask, what is, what is a leader in this context?
I think we classified leaders, correct me if I'm wrong, as principals, assistant principals, also our district-level coordinators would be included in that leader group. So folks who work in central admin and/or principals and assistant principals at the buildings.
Okay. And then my, my other question is, what, in this presentation, does everything here relate to something involving a piece of technology or is it broader than that? Because I'm seeing mostly pictures that have Chromebooks, iPads, and laptops, but it's, this is everything, right?
It would, yes, to technology and to our innovation guiding principles, those teaching and learning practices that we've talked a little bit about, things like, "Learning fosters a culture of curiosity and risk-taking. Learning is founded in inquiry." So those, those are just two of those six big ones. So it's also talking about teaching and learning practices that may or may not involve technology to help those things, as well as different kinds of learning environments as part of the innovation and bond work, where those specific innovation guiding principles are supported and actually grown. So yes, to the technology, but it also, I think, includes a broader, broader vision of what really highly impactful innovative teaching and learning practices can be with technology as a tool or resource to help support those.
And I think that's the key element, is it's a tool. You know, sometimes they're using it just like they would their pencil. And so that's why you may see more technology in some of the actual images, but it's just a tool.
So I think I'm going to ask Jenny's question in a different way. If I were a parent of an elementary school child this year, what do you think they would come home and say is different this year because of this PD? What story might they tell over dinner or a middle school student?
So my, my hope would be that some of the stories they would start to tell would be opportunities for more student inquiry, for students to engage in perhaps a more maker-type culture where they're building, making, and doing things, perhaps engaging in some more project-based learning that really engages deep thinking over a longer period of time, geared towards real-world, authentic problems that they're thinking about solutions to. I would think that there would, there would be this engaged student who was challenged and pushed in different ways perhaps than more of our traditional direct-type instruction has done in the past. So I think that they might be able to see the shift towards that integration of these different kind of approaches to education that are more innovative as described by our guiding principles and what our mission and vision and the success effects speak to, delivered perhaps in a different way with, again, tools and learning environments supporting that. So I'm not quite sure if that answered your question or not, Tina, but I could just see that as a big difference moving forward.
I think that, if I could just add, I think the big picture also with this is, if we go back to our vision and mission and goals, it really, what we consistently heard from the community when we had our community consensus group is that academics, yes, and we want opportunities for our students that are relevant, meaningful, and engaging. I think some of what you heard this evening are professional development activities so that we can enhance the learning environment for all students. So I agree with what Kipony said. I'd like to have the stories coming home, is that we were engaged in really meaningful learning activities and we see how it relates to the academic content. When we haven't been able to do that, it doesn't necessarily have that transfer. So I think that was both what we heard from our community and also what we committed to when we adopted the vision, mission, values, and goals. So this is a part of moving this forward with the strategic plan.
So as part of this PD, following up on Tina's question, are teachers given counsel on appropriate limits to the use of these tools? You know, we've, some board members, myself included, have expressed members, myself included, have expressed some concern that at the elementary level, we don't want to go too far into, you know, a lot of screen time.
Right.
Is that part of this process?
Yeah, so I think what will be helpful, and, and our commitment after the June discussion with the board, is to give board members opportunity to get in the schools more and see the application of this, so that I think what you'll have a chance to see, and it'll just be better than us in here saying it, is to see that this technology, whether it's an iPad, or a Chromebook, or another device, is a tool used along the way. It looks different in high school, obviously, than it does in elementary school, but it, it will be around, but it won't be the focus. It isn't like setting at computer stations in a lab. It's using the technology as a part of a rich learning experience. But I think, yes, to answer your question, are we paying attention to screen time in that, and by design, creating activities that don't require high levels of screen time. It would simply be when you need to enter data or, you know, access something, then that's when you would do it. So, but I think visitations, as we have a chance to look at some of our cohort group in action, will be helpful to you.
Other questions or comments? Jenny?
So, I'd like to piggyback on that and say that it's really, I mean, visiting schools and seeing it in action is really helpful, because one of the things that I took away from today's conversation, I know that we have some concern about the appropriate use of technology and, on our board, and so I asked, or, you know, we talked about it a little bit at Cole, and what I heard was some really thoughtful, some real thoughtfulness about age appropriateness of the use of technology, and not, and using technology as a tool like a pencil, as opposed to using it as a substitute for, for interactions, certainly at the elementary level and at this school. There was an awareness from leadership and from the teacher I talked to, at least, about, you know, the fact that there's no substitute for, for the personal relationship, and that the, while what I heard was some real enthusiasm for the use of technology, it was, with an understanding that it was just a tool and meant it, not a crutch. And so, I, so, so my point being that I, I would encourage, I, I hope that we will follow up on some of those visits and opportunities to see the technology in action, because it made me really appreciate the thoughtfulness of our staff.
Other questions or comments? If not, Kelly and Tiffany, thank you very much for all your work and for presenting tonight. Appreciate it. We'll move to our next agenda item, which is action items, our consent grouping, including 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, August 9, 2016, Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, August 9, 2016, Special Meeting, 7.4 Approval of Minutes, August 9, 2016, Regular Meeting, Approval of Minutes, August 16, 2016, Special Meeting, 7.6 Acceptance of Donation, Aspen Creek K8, 7.7 Acceptance of Donation, Whittier Elementary, 7.8 Amendment to the Construction Manager/General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at Emerald Elementary School, 7.9 Approval of the Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at BCSIS High Peaks Elementary School, 7.10 Award of Contract for Apperson-Evo-Dessa Assessments, 7.11 Grant Special Education Idea Part B, Colorado Department of Ed, 7.12 Grant Special Education Idea Part C, Preschool, Colorado Department of Ed. Need a motion, oh, first of all, are there any items board members would like to poll from the consent grouping? Shelley? These are sevens, yeah. 7.10 Award of Contract for Apperson-Evo-Dessa Assessment. That item is polled. Any other items board members would like to poll? If not, I need a motion for the consent agenda, minus 7.10. Motion from Kathy, second. Second by Jenny. Discussion of any of the items on the consent agenda? Any discussion? Hearing none. Laura, could you please call the vote?
Belvall.
Yes.
Benford.
Yes.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Marquess.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we'll look at the item polled by Board Member Benford, Award of Contract for Apperson-Evo-Dessa Assessments. Shelley?
So, I have several concerns about this contract that I want to share tonight. And I'll start with just the general lack of community input into the district's SEL strategy as a whole. I was, I know I was really looking forward to better understanding that strategy at the work session last week, but instead, it seemed to me that we spent a lot of time listening to the DESA vendor talk about, you know, the benefits of his assessment. And it didn't leave much time to talk about the implications of what that assessment might be, or its validity, or its legality, or the financial implications, or parental permission issues, or data collection, or frankly, any, you know, any of the questions that I had, we just really didn't have time to talk about that night. So, but now tonight, we have that contract in front of us, and I feel like it's come too quickly, that, you know, I for one just don't feel like I have enough information to approve this contract. I also am unclear about why, a couple of months ago, we talked about piloting this assessment, this universal screener, but now it seems like we're rolling it out to the entire district, you know, doing, moving right into full implementation without testing it. So, I'm, I'm not sure how that happened, and, and I'm not sure how this screener fits into the district's overall SEL strategy. So, so I, I have concerns about that. I'm also concerned about the lack of transparency involved with this. It seems like parents are not going to know that we're doing this in any sort of concerted way on our part to let them know, just like they really didn't know about the academic tenacity survey. And when I inquired about that multiple times, I was told that we don't have to tell them. This isn't a protected area. There's no protected information involved in this survey. So, by law, we don't need to get parents' consent. Well, I feel like, you know, the law is a floor, not the ceiling, and that just because the law may say that we do not have to get consent, doesn't mean that we, as a district, don't want to do that. And I feel like that's the same issue with this assessment. In fact, when I was reading the contract language, I was surprised that they actually said in their proposal, "In year two or three," year two or three, "Three years after we have been giving this assessment, we would suggest that you begin to think about sharing results with parents by making results available in parent conferences or incorporating results into your report cards." For me, that's just unacceptable, that we'd be collecting information on kids for three years, and parents wouldn't find out about it until they saw it on their report cards. And by the way, that is the one thing, when a parent wants to amend an educational record, they have the right to do that, but the one thing they do not have the right to amend is anything on their report card. So, this is not something that a parent can argue or change if it goes on to a report card. So, you know, that's a question I would have liked to have asked, you know, had we had time the other night. So, you know, I, I just don't really think we should be gathering sensitive data like this on students and uploading it into the cloud without even telling parents. The other concern I have is about actually the whole training and administration of this survey. So, it appears that what will happen is that a sixth grader who's brand-new to his or her school will walk in on day one, brand-new, new expectations of this kid, and the student will go to, for example, his first-period math class, where there could be up to 35 students, because we have that in our middle schools, and not only is the teacher expected to teach to the wide range of abilities in that math class, now he or she is also expected to administer an SEL survey to 35 students. So, she can't do this until she's known the child for one month. So, she has to have known the child for four weeks, and so, four weeks of one hour a day, okay, she's going to make this assessment, after having training that encompasses four webinars of 45 minutes each. So, that's the extent of the training. So, now she's expected to indicate on a five-point scale how often the student engaged in each behavior over the past four weeks, and to complete that survey in about one minute. Now, I don't know about you, but I could not do that, and I'm actually semi-trained in this sort of thing. I could not do that. So, she does her best. She inputs the information, which is uploaded into the cloud, and even if she really knows nothing about the student, because she hasn't really had time to observe him and her, it becomes a part of that student's profile, and it goes into his or her education record, which brings me to my concerns about data privacy. When these results are part of an education record, they can be shared with any number of third parties out there without parental concern, consent. And that includes state and federal agencies, law enforcement agencies, employers, universities, military recruiters, insurance companies, you name it. They can all get their hands on the results of this assessment that a teacher did with very little training in one minute on this kid that she has known for four weeks, in one hour a day of exposure to the child. So, I'm not sure that I really want, you know, I mean, I have a lot of respect for teachers, but this is superficial training at best, and I'm not sure I want somebody like that responsible for uploading data about kids into the cloud. It also says in the contract that the results of our kids' surveys or assessments will now become known euphemistically as statistical data, which can be collected and used by the contractor for any, quote, "lawful business purpose," provided that it's only used in aggregated form. Well, we know now that it's becoming increasingly clear that there is no such thing as aggregated data, that it can be de-identified quite easily with very little, very few points of data required to do that. So, this is putting even aggregated data at risk. And then there's the question of, of whether this is even legal or not. ESSA and our new state privacy law both prevent us from administering assessments that measure and collect information on student attitudes and beliefs without parental consent. So, and furthermore, there are other federal laws, like the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment, that require districts to work with parents to establish policies on surveys created by third parties before they're administered to kids, and rights of parents to inspect instructional materials used as a part of a curriculum, which this seems like that's where we're headed, and also administration of any sort of screening of students. And I, as far as I can tell, we have not worked with parents to develop policies that would address this assessment. So, you know, I'm not sure we're even in compliance with the law. And then, of course, there are the financial implications of this. If you look at this contract, we're looking at just under a quarter million dollars over the next three years. I mean, that's the equivalent of, you know, at least three counselors, and if you split them in half, like, we could have halftime counselors at six schools instead of doing this, or more prepared professionals. These are the kinds of SEL interventions that our schools are asking for, that CASL recommended, and I'm just not sure that spending nearly a quarter of a million dollars on this without any evidence that it's going to do anything is a wise use of our funds right now. And then, just a, a couple of the random concerns is that there's actually a component of this that has to do with assessing teachers, which we did not discuss at all in that work session. So, you know, I'm, I'd like to know, what's the teacher assessment data going to be used for? How will it be used? You know, I don't understand that at all. And I'm also concerned that this is going to replace our climate survey. You know, our climate survey, even though it wasn't perfect, it, it let us know if kids felt like they were included in their school. It let us know if they felt like they were being bullied. It let us know if they felt like there was somebody safe and trusted in the school that they could turn to if they were in trouble. I mean, it gave us really good information about our schools, and we have now traded that in for this, and this is not going to tell us that. It's not going to give us the information that we used to have. So, anyway, I think there are lots of ways we can address the SEL needs of our kids without, you know, spending a lot of money to do it, and, you know, I would like to propose that we not approve this contract in some, until some of those concerns have been addressed. So, you know, and I could repeat them, but I won't. So, I'd like to move, make a motion that we not approve this contract.
It's a motion. Is there a second?
Wait, there's, I could add.
So, the question is, what to approve the contract, and that's the motion that was being taken.
Either voted, either voted.
Okay. So, let's continue the discussion, and then there may be a substitute motion, but I'd like, that's a lot that you've raised, and I'd like to get Dr. Messenger's response to at least what he can respond to at this point. And Richard, do you have additional questions?
Yeah, Sam, I, I read the contract, too, and, and I really appreciated the, the presentation, but I also left that particular work session with a lot of unclear answers. A couple of concerns that I had, and, and, you know, what you just mentioned are way above what I had, because, you know, I had some very practical concerns. One concern that I had was the rating system, as, as I read it, appears to be pretty subjective, because you have one raider making some judgments in terms of some, some, some of the areas that this particular thing is going to be rating. And I also saw that the raiders are going to be the teachers primarily, and it seemed to me like we're always talking that teachers have a lot on their plate, do they have enough time to do this? Some, I have a concern on that. And then, you mentioned that this particular information is going to live on the cloud, but I, but it's also going to be in the QUM folders, which I have a big concern about. And also, how will that information affect students as they move on to higher grades? Concerned about labeling as it relates to some of the students. I'm also very concerned about the norming of this particular measure instrument. I'm not sure how it was normed, whether it was normed on Latino kids, African-American kids. I didn't get that information. And I'm really, really trying very hard to understand, for example, one item on that particular rating system is optimistic thinking. How do you measure optimistic thinking, or any of the other areas that are in that particular instrument? I'm not sure how you do that, you know, and especially when you're looking at, at a minute to do all that work. And I agree, I think I would like to see if we can't table this particular contract until we get more information. I gotta have more information to be comfortable in terms of voting for it. There's a lot of details. I'm going to be attending the SEL conference that's being set up Monday at the Northland Conference Center, just to learn more about what, what all of this means, so that I can be able to vote on it with good conscience in terms of it's going to be helpful for students or not.
Okay. So, two board members looking for more information. Kathy?
I share many of the concerns, and I have an additional question, which is, can parents opt their kids out of this if they don't even know about it? That language, I agree, Shelley, kind of took my breath away, that in year two or three, we're going to tell the parents. I, as a parent, wouldn't be very happy finding out that they're assessing the social-emotional status of my child without telling me. It goes in the record, and then several years later, I find out about it. So, I just was wondering what the parental involvement is, if parents can opt out, and so, since we do live in a community where parents are engaged in testing and exercising their parental rights and not have their children be tested in certain things. So, I just add that to the list of concerns.
Okay. And Tina?
I just have one question about it, which is on page 24 of the, I think it's the, the page that stipulates what are the services, I'm sorry, it's Exhibit, Exhibit C with pricing. It has in that, that in the year 1617, we would be buying lessons in curriculum for grades one through eight, and then next year, we would be buying those for high school students. I always get nervous when we talk about adding new curriculum, and we haven't gone through the process of parent inspection, and because we're labeling it as curriculum, I think it should follow the policy IH, I think. And I know that I haven't been able to look at that curriculum either. So, that's my, my biggest concern there, is can we figure out a way to either not call it curriculum, which I don't think is where we should go, but, but to follow the process that we normally process with anything that's being taught in a classroom.
So, let's give Dr. Messenger a chance to respond to what he can.
Well, it would have been helpful to have these questions in advance, but as I'd requested in an email. But having said that, this, to step back, this is a screening tool, not a survey. The survey that will replace the survey we used in the past is still under development, so two different items, as was presented to us last week, is this is a screening tool that teachers would administer. And if you had a chance to read through the information, those students who, and it's looking at characteristics or behaviors, and that a majority of the students will be just fine. And if there are, is need to do a deeper dive, there's additional screening that would go on. And then, as it was described to us last week, at that point, interventions or strategies would be available, curriculum, interventions, whatever the right word is, to assist in supporting those students to, so they can be successful. So, that was what was described to us last week. So that was what was described to us last week. We went through an R F P process, this is a valid and reliable instrument, it was among several that were reviewed. I would just say that most of the questions seem to be around the implementation plan, not around the instrument. This is still a pilot, schools will opt into this, this is a part of the multi-tiered systems to support approach that we're using in the school district. I think we'd be very pleased, we ended the meeting actually last week in this conversation about bringing more back on this topic, we'd be glad to bring back more information on implementation. I don't think it's anywhere in our implementation plan not to inform parents, I don't think it's anywhere in our implementation plan to put data in a place that isn't shared with parents, and so we could certainly address that as well. If a school or classrooms opt into this, it would be a part of what they would communicate and move forward. So it seems that the worst fears being expressed tonight really have to do with a lack of understanding around the implementation plan, and so that's probably what needs to occur. And if we're confident in approving the contract, and we'll bring back to you our plan for implementing this as a pilot initially, and what data we reviewed, we'd be glad to do that, we could do that through an R F I if one were submitted, or we could schedule a special work session, and those interested could come and hear that. So we'd be glad to do that.
Thank you. And what would be the consequence of not approving the contract this evening? It just pushes back our data collection?
Yeah, well, actually, the training would be delayed, it's scheduled for early September, so probably it would impact the implementation in the sixteen seventeen school year, I guess it would depend on how long it took us to decide. So, but yeah, we, I mean, we've got queued up to get started in the fall for district, for schools that, or classrooms that pi- opt in to do the pilot. So, I mean, it would just delay the implementation.
Tom? Tom hasn't spoken yet.
Sam, do you know if our district accountability committee has a chance to, had a chance to look at this and weigh on it and give a recommendation or concerns?
I don't know that the D A C has had their first meeting yet, have they?
So as we shared with you last week in this conversation on that question, was that the D A C will be before you in September, asking for guidance on areas that you would like them to work, and this is probably going to be queued up as one of those areas that they would be, I don't want to speak for them, I think they would be interested if that were guidance the board provided.
Tina?
Could you just address the curriculum piece, or is there a way not to use the curriculum component of the screener until we've gone through the, the parent review of the strategies?
So there's this gray area in our work around what is a program, what are interventions, and what is a curriculum? So you, as a board, do not approve curriculum for counselors, and yet they use programs, interventions, all the time. So I don't know what the right or wrong answer to that is. I think what might have value is looking at the kind of interventions or strategies they recommend, and see how that's alike or different, that we do another S E L work like the problem-based, or, you know, the, the programs we already have in place that have not gone before review or approval, or counseling programs. I mean, it's just a gray area for us, so we could certainly look and see, does it fit in the curriculum box, or does it fit into other interventions that teachers and counselors use all the time that aren't a part of a formal curriculum? Sometimes that word is used interchangeably with program strategies and curriculum, but we could certainly look at it, and if we think it matches the criteria that we normally put in the curriculum box, then would be any reason we wouldn't bring it forward.
I think what I've seen in some of the social emotional learning programs is many of them are actually packaged as lessons plan, you know, when you look at a second steps or your pathways.
Right, which we're using in the district, yeah.
Right, and I think those really are curriculum, because it's a, you know, it's PD, teacher, and a whole classroom environment, and because this, I mean, it was interesting to your point, it says lesson slash curriculum, so it's really tough to know, you know, how we need to be communicating this to parents, and, you know, with social emotional stuff, my guess is parents will have some interest in that. So if we could find a way to get more information out, and, and also to, to try and understand how this is going to work alongside the different programs that have been put in schools, I mean, that's a site basis, but now we're having, you know, I just, I hope it's easy to discern, you know, which program are we going to use for which situation, for those schools that have already invested in some of their social emotional programs.
So if I could, Sam, so last week, Andy Tucker, as a part of his comments, Andy's the Director of Guidance Services for the District, talked about one of the major areas we'll do in, under S E L this year is really continuing that inventory. The CASL started last spring, you know, school by school, area by area, to see what, what are we actually doing? How effective are those programs? A part of that inventorying and review will be where does this strategy fit in, in partnership with that? You know, we believe we probably have some programs that are not being adequately implemented, and probably they're not best practice, and we have some that are just the opposite. So, and that's kind of what the CASL report shared as well. So these will dovetail with that work. There is a multi-tiered systems to support leadership team in every school now, folks who have started their training around this, they will take lead in working with the improvement plan for that building about where, you know, do they want to pilot, and where does this fit, and how does it complement the programming, and will be a part of that whole data collection we have internally, and that's more of a program data collection, about what, what are our practices, which of those do we want to maintain, and which of those might we evaluate more. So, but to your earlier question, Tina, I don't have any concern pulling the strategies, programs, lessons, whatever is embedded, and bringing that out and, you know, putting it on the table and looking at it and saying, does this need to go through what kind of a review and approval process? Certainly sharing it with parents and having the community know about it, no concern, just like our P B S programs are right now. Again, whether does it need to go through a formal approval process, I guess eventually we'd leave that to the discretion of the board.
Jenny?
I think I have a question and then a comment. So this program that we're approving, this contract would be for a pilot, and each individual school would decide whether they wanted to be part of the pilot, and do I understand that those schools would probably run that decision through their communities, their parent, and, or have they already done that? Have they already stepped forward for that?
So I don't think they have done it. So the, what you're actually have before you tonight is approval of a contract to allow us to use the screening tool. You know, that's what you would be approving tonight, and then that would allow us to go to the respective schools and their M T S S leadership teams to say, is yours a school that wants to pilot this? And if they do, I think what I'm hearing is to make sure that we've appropriately, adequately processed that with the community, the school community, parents and others, to say, what will this entail? How will it be used? What will we gain from it? You might recall last week, some of the questions of the presenter on this screening tool said, you know, the tool doesn't add value, it's the data we gather from the tool that leads us to actions, lessons that we would do with students who might benefit from that, that's where the value is added. This is simply opens the door to those strategies. So, I mean, he kind of articulated that. He did talk about the lessons or the embedded curriculum or programs that would be available to staff, not exclusively, he said, but as a complement to other programming that we were doing, but give us a deeper understanding of the needs of the students. The questions around data privacy, this matches, it's been reviewed by our legal counsel, it matches our contract expectations, so there's no greater risk that data in this set will be any more at risk of being misused or used than data that's in our special education records or in our student management system. All of those systems have been reviewed. So, I mean, anything is possible, I suppose, but, you know, we presently rate behaviors of students on report cards, and those are in their files, and probably not in a very valid or reliable way, because I don't know that we've done a lot of training around what to look for, what one teacher might see in a first grader versus what another teacher might see in a first grader. This actually would create greater uniformity around a valid instrument, and training that we get is probably better data that we could make decisions around, but we presently collect that data, and it's in, and student records now.
Well, that was going to be my comment, Sam, was that we, we make those kinds of, I mean, one of the appeals of something like this for me is it's a little bit more standardized, because we currently make those kinds of evaluations about kids all the time, and we actually, in our schools, adopt inter, I mean, you know, adopt interventions for those kids, I mean, for, I don't want to say those kids, for some students based on the, the evaluations that we've made for kids in a, in a, in a less than standardized way, so that sometimes it's a, it's a little harder to have the conversation with parents, because we really are relying so fully on an informal, highly subjective, even more subjective process. I, I looked at this and thought, wow, this is really subjective, it's going to take some training, but, 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 but it, it's a step forward, I think, from, from what we've been doing, and I do know that I've been concerned about, and, and I know our, our schools are, I mean, I, in Brimfield, anyway, our schools are really floundering with, I hate to say floundering, but our schools are really struggling to find interventions that will work with kids, because they see this real need to, to address these kinds of needs, and so I'm, I'm hopeful that, and, and it concerns me that we leave every school on its own to do that kind of work, and every teacher on their own to do that kind of work, because I think we need, do need to, so I, I like the idea of doing something that's a little more standardized, and, and that there is at least some training. And, and the other observation that I have is that for this particular one, I will say that I, I really regret having missed last week's presentation, but I, I did like the idea that they were doing a strengths-based evaluation of kids, because I'm all about, I'm, coming from a tag background, I'm all about building on kids' strengths. I think that the kind of deficit model we often use when we're trying to intervene with kids, in, in a variety of ways, from social and emotional to academic, is, is a mistake, because it, it makes kids, you start out thinking of kids as failures, and I really don't think we should ever think of kids as failures, they all have strengths that we can build on, and so I really liked what this model had to say about doing a strengths-based sort of initial screening. And I had a question that I really needed answered, and anyway.
You can think about it. I, Bruce, you pointed out that what's on before us is approval of the contract, and that most of the concerns are around implementation, but if we approve the contract, we're going to be implementing it, right? So-
And as a pilot, yes. I mean, that would be our intent. So maybe I would just, be helpful to take a couple steps back. One of the things that we've talked about for several years is establishing a common assessment, common assessments across the district, because what we have lacked is consistent data to identify is what we're doing making a difference, and are we seeing the kind of growth that we want? That's true in mathematics, it's true in literacy, we've had that conversation, and you know we're working on that. In fact, it's a part of the strategic plan, and when the budget was approved in June, it was about allocating resources so that we could acquire common assessments. This would actually be the first one. There are more to come, in that, that if we're going to be, have common assessments and common data, then we need a tool to do that with, and presently, we don't have that. This is in the area of social emotional learning. Obviously, we'll also look at other areas, we are, that's in process right now with the assessment committee. So this has gone through the kind of review and rigor that we would for finding other assessments, whether it's reading or mathematics or other areas that might be academic in nature. I think what was shared last week, and we believe deeply, is that social emotional learning is incredibly important to the development of children, and their well-being, and their success in school, which student success is our primary goal. So absent a tool like this, whether it's this one or another one, we don't believe we'll have that data, and we don't believe we'll have anything concrete and valid to share with you to say, these are the programs, we took CASL's recommendations, we're doing these things, and we don't know if it's making any difference, because we're not collecting any data on it. Now, the nature of a pilot is that it may be exactly what we'd hoped it would be, and it gives us what we need to move forward, or it may not be, and then we wouldn't continue it. But until we have something to work with, which we don't have anything now, the survey that Shelley referred to early is not this. This is around the students, not around the students' perception, this is a perception of the students. So he made that pretty clear last week when we talked through that, two different instruments. There is another instrument we're working on, which is the survey, which is not this, that the students would actually participate in, that's yet to come, and clearly, we need to spend some time walking through that with the board before we, you know, suggest implementation, continue the pilot in that area. Two different things. So, so our committee that worked on this, you know, established the criteria, they went in the marketplace, they took proposals, they evaluated the proposals, they looked at, you know, would this be a valid, reliable measure, and would it be a good basis for us to start? And we believe this is the best in the marketplace that we could begin with. If we reject this, then we, I mean, if we do, then we simply don't have an instrument, a common assessment to collect around S E L at this time, and probably will make our work more complicated to evaluate the success of our programs and interventions, which, I mean, this came out of the CASL's work when we had them review that. So it's a hill to climb, and it's one we think we need to climb, not just in S E L, social emotional learning, but in other content areas as well.
Kathy, then Jenny?
Could you, is there any impact on teachers in this? So if I am a teacher and I have a lot, I mean, and I can show my kids went from seldom to great frequency, do I get rewarded for that? I mean, is there an impact on, on teacher performance in this? Because I couldn't find anything in there, but Shelley said there was something in there about teachers, and I didn't hear you answer that question, so I'm just trying to figure out what the impact is on the individual teacher from this.
So I assume Shelley was reading from the contract. So in our district, we have performance standards for our teachers as part of the educator effectiveness, which this board is very familiar with, this board helped to create and approved, so we do not have high-stakes accountability measures for our teachers in any area, and we won't in social emotional learning either. So if I'm a third-grade teacher, and I've collected this data, and I'm using some of the strategies along with other staff, and I want to see if it's making an impact, there'd be some intrinsic reward that would come, that the work I'm doing is making a positive difference. It's, we have reviewed this with the Boulder Valley Education Association, it is not our intent to use this as any kind of rewards or punishment system for our teachers, as we don't with literary, literary scores or anything else. Now, does that mean if we're working on things over time, and we're not seeing the kind of progress, would we have a conversation with the teacher about that, just like we do in first grade literacy? We sure might. But again, I think that's that more wraparound accountability system we use that's about support, not about punishment.
So I remembered my question, which is, well, two, first of all, who was on the committee that vetted this?
Teachers, administrators, members of the committee, I can get you those names if you'd like.
Okay, but it was a teacher, administrator, any, any community members?
Yeah, it was a representative.
Or any community members?
We did not have community members on this, we have them on the Systems to Support Committee.
Okay. And then what kind of records, I mean, what kind of record-keeping will we do with this? Will this go into kids' permanent, I mean, I, I share a little bit of those concerns, we're keeping, would this go into kids' permanent records, this kind of?
No decision's been made to date, whether any of this data would go on a report card. You know, we talk about, we give the C M A S test, we give the literacy test, we give, you know, reading recovery, I mean, we've got a whole litany of data we collect, and on each of those, we have to decide, you know, does this go into a report card, is this a formative assessment, does it come up parent-teacher council conferences? I mean, I, I would just say decisions have not been made about the best use of this data for parents. As you read through the materials, there is a role for parents in this as well, in that if a child, you know, needs some additional support, some of that should happen at school and some of those, but there are probably things that parents could do at home, and so, not unlike helping them in literacy, there would be things they could do to support the strengths of the children at home. So clearly, there's a strong parent component in this, just exactly what that would look like in the implementation plan could be shared.
Well, and so sharing parents, sharing this with parents, I think, almost goes without saying we should be doing that, but, I mean, but, but what my question was, I mean, if we evaluate a kid in the third grade, it's not going to show up in their high school transcript that they were not sufficiently optimistic or something?
It would not be our intent to do that.
Okay, I'm sorry?
I mean, we don't do that with student discipline data now.
Okay, so it'd be?
I mean, we do not do that with student discipline data now, because we don't want it to prejudice, only if it's a safety and security issue do we do that.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Tom, then Tina?
So I think the, the questions here for me, and it sounds like my other board members here roll around not the assessment or the screening tool, but around our plans of rolling this out, how are we going to communicate it, how transparent we're going to be, what parents' rights are, if they can opt out. So a number of unanswered questions around implementation that have, you know, some bigger implications, and without community input and D A C input, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to say, let's get that first before we roll out a plan on how we're going to use a given tool in an overall scheme. I would agree, common assessments are important, but how we plan and approach this is, is more important.
Yeah, I had one further question. What, so which committee is this? It's called the what committee?
Systems of Support, it comes out of the Systems of Support Committee.
Okay.
Which is one of the six areas in the strategic plan that we're focused on.
Okay. So, and first of all, I, I just want to start with a comment that I'm really glad we're using third-party screeners, that we're not trying to develop these in-house. I think that would be-
So am I.
-a really big deal for a fairly, a relatively small, medium district to do that, and I think that's great. It would, it would just be nice to, to have a commitment that we'll have a lot of parent, parental transparency around this prior to its implementation in any school, and that it's clear how the data will be communicated back to parents, because once you say the word screener or test, parents just have to know what happens, and that's just the way I think it's going to work from a parent perspective. And the other thing is, thinking about with this committee, putting a D A C member, a board member, or some community members might be worthwhile. I feel like that this is, I think this is the, this is a good thing to do, and I think that it would be good to have some different voices on that committee over time as we look at other things and look at strategies and things like that. It might be something to consider, or even, you know, parents coming from S A Cs, there's always a lot of talk in D A C and SAC, it was in both D A C and SAC, since I've been involved in schools six or seven years- involved in schools six or seven years ago, eight years ago. This has been a big deal, and a lot of people are curious. So, and they'll have a lot of questions. Another thought is that, you know, if we're going to do a new climate survey and a new SEL survey, and possibly doing this SEL inventory and new strategies, to think about having some kind of district-wide open house, or some site-based open houses talking about this might be of interest to the community. And it may not be.
Good suggestions.
Richard?
Tina, help me understand what you just said in terms of going with third-party screeners. We're using a third-party assessment tool, right?
Mm-hmm.
The screeners are going to be in-house.
Correct.
The people actually filling out the?
Well, I'm calling the tool, I'm calling the tool a screener.
Okay.
Got it. The teacher's the screener in your sentence.
Shelley, could you restate your motion? It's been a while.
Can I comment?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, bet I will.
Thanks.
So, you know, we've seen this before, where the district has asked us to approve something before we've gotten input, instead of the reverse. And I just think that is a backward process. And I feel like we need the input before we do any approving of anything. And this board needs to understand what our overall strategy is, and how this would fit into that before we approve that. So I just want to say we've seen this before, where we've been asked to trust, you know, approve this, and then later we'll get community input. And I don't think that's the right way to go. I'd also like to respond to your comment, Bruce, about us being confused about the implementation plan. Well, I don't see how we couldn't be confused, because we've never seen it. So until we see it and can actually, you know, know what you're planning, then I think, you know, it's perfectly rational for us to be asking these questions. And Jenny, I appreciate what you said about this being a strength-based survey. You know, I initially, you know, I mean, I can relate to that. But in actuality, that's just words, because, you know, if you're looking at a variable like optimistic thinking, you're still scoring somebody 100 to 0 on it. So you can call it whatever you want, but if you get a 0 on it, you're not very good at it. So, you know, whether it's a strength or not, it's kind of, you know, strength term or not, is relatively, you know, irrelevant. And Bruce, to your comment about, you don't know whether this is going to go on the report card or not, that's not really the issue, whether it goes on the report card. We all know this goes in their education record, which is very different from their report card.
Maybe you could define what you mean by that, Shelley, what an education record is.
Well, education record is a legal term that includes any information that has to do with a student.
Right.
So.
Thousands and thousands of pieces of data on every student today.
That's right. That's right. And it goes in our education record, and because it's in the record, it's protected by certain laws.
Right.
FERPA. But FERPA has exceptions that allow that data to flow out of the district into the hands of third parties. And that exception-
Without our permission, Shelley?
Well, no. Once we designate somebody a school official, that they can gather information on our students, then they can do whatever they want with it.
But we have to grant them permission, correct? I mean, we don't, you know I've blocked-
Most of our contract providers are school officials. Google is, infant campuses, like, they are school officials, or otherwise, they would not be getting our-
And in their contracts, it restricts who they can share it with, and how it can be used, as it is in this contract.
Except for if they're using it for predictive purposes, or for assessments, or for intervention. There's like 12 exceptions that we make in our own policy that allows these companies to do what they want. So there are all sorts of loopholes, Bruce, that would allow a company, I'm not saying this company would do anything bad with it, I'm not saying that, but they can share it, you know? And other people can do that with it. So I just think we need to be, it's not like having an A or B or C in science, and that going on your education record. This is very, very different. You know, this is talking about kids' beliefs and their attitudes about themselves. And like I tried to say about the academic tenacity survey, if you have a kid who's, who's filling out a report, and he says, you know, I try really hard, but sometimes I can't control myself, and I do bad things, okay? And that goes into their education record, along with five or six other answers they gave. And someday, that kid's sitting in front of a law enforcement official, they've committed a crime, or they're being accused of committing a crime. And they look back in those education records, and they see that this kid even considers himself impulsive and unable to do, stop himself from doing bad things. That can weigh into that decision. And why would we want a 10-year-old, you know, who might be in a bad mood someday, or be in a certain emotional state someday, filling out a survey that's going to track with them for the rest of their lives potentially? That's what we're talking about here. That's why I get worked up about it. It's not because I'm concerned about this particular vendor, or this particular assessment. I'm concerned about all of it, and that we don't have the data privacy protections in place that we need to prevent those kinds of really terrible things from happening. So if you ask me, do I want to weigh that risk against us having a common assessment this September, I would say, oh, my goodness. You know, we've not had a common assessment for years, you know? We're getting by, and, and our kid's data is not out there right now suggesting that they have a certain emotional state that's not acceptable to someone, and it's now a part of their record. So I think the risks far, far outweigh the benefits of doing this. And so if you want me to read my motion, I'd be-
Can I comment?
The document you wanted to respond, then if you'll read the motion again.
So there's a lot in all that. I guess I would just say, what goes with a student is their transcript. And if, if a law enforcement agency wants data that we have on a student, we require them to subpoena that data. And so can they subpoena any data, any behavior records? That would be up to a judge to determine that. So that'd be student, we do not put that on the transcript, and we do not share it. And when the Colorado Department of Education wants data from us that isn't required by law, I say no. And we have blocked that, and it has created some discussion with the Department of Education. We stand at the door, and we let data out that we are required to let out, and data that we think has value to the student. Students want a transcript when they apply to go to a college to demonstrate their proficiency. So I would just say that if we believe in this fear-based strategy as described by Shelley, then we probably need to rethink our strategies on SEL, because if we don't collect data around how our students are doing and how they're progressing, we won't know if our interventions are making a difference. And ultimately, that won't be a good investment. I would attribute a part of our achievement gap in this district that we've lived with for several decades now, that students underachieving is in part a result of us not having quality, best practices interventions around SEL. The data shared with you last week would demonstrate that to be true. And so we can improve our literacy, we can improve our ELD programs, we can hire teachers of color, we can hire bilingual teachers, and I'm pretty confident if we don't deal with this dimension, we'll be looking at an achievement gap five years from now, just like you've looked at the same achievement gap five years ago. We believe, as did you in the improvement of division mission values and goals, that this dimension around SEL is really important. We believe having screening data will be an important part of that. Otherwise, we don't have a database. The fears that Shelley just articulated won't go away by understanding the implementation plan, because we don't share that data now unless required to through a subpoena. And so, and even that data would most likely not be something they would be searching for, generally looking for hard incidental data. So that would be just my comment on that. I don't think this goes away in a month or in a year if we have a fear about collecting any data around our students. I will just tell you, we're collecting that data now, and it's in our system today, just as Jenny described, in a very subjective, lack of training, individual judgment. This at least would be uniform judgment on a common tool that's both a valid and reliable measure. So anyway, that's what I would say.
Shelley?
You may accuse me of being fear-based, Bruce, but actually, 93% of parents agree with me and are concerned about the amount of data being shared about their students in ways that they don't understand. So if I'm fear-based, then 93% of parents are fear-based right now about this. So, you know, the other thing is, you know, I, when we started talking about all this, I do what I always do, which is research. And one of the things I did was talk to DPS about what they do, a representative from DPS. And one of the things they do is, you know, they have programs that are around emotional freedom techniques, meditation, yoga. Their counselors are trained in some of those things. And they measure their results by kids' self-reports, nurses' visits, grades, teachers' observations. They have multiple ways of measuring whether their kids are, you know, improving in terms of social-emotional learning, and, and those kinds of issues. So it's just not true that we need an assessment like this to ascertain whether our kids are getting their social-emotional needs met. Not every district does this. We don't have to do it this way. We need to talk about other ways to do this that won't result in massive amounts of data being captured on these kids. And to say that this district is, stands as a guard against information going, maybe we, we are the guard when it comes to subpoenas for juvenile justice. But we are certainly not the guard when it comes to, you know, allowing Chrome Sync to be the default, in the default position on, on our Chromebooks, and our kids' browsing history is going straight out the door, and Google can see exactly what they're looking at when they go off, off of Google apps into YouTube, or searching on the internet. We're not, we're not standing at the door of that. So how can I believe that we're standing at the door of anything? Because that's a simple thing to do that most districts are doing, and we're not.
I might just add, Sam, this would just be one to inform a data collection to Shelley's point. It would be our intent to use all those things she said as well. This is simply one tool.
Right. Shelley, could you restate your motion?
Yeah. I move that we not approve this contract until the district has solicited input from DAC, SACS, and other community members, and until the board has a complete understanding of the strategic, legal, financial, and privacy implications of adopting assessments and/or surveys for purposes of social-emotional learning.
Did that have a second?
Second.
Second, and from Tom. I'd like to vote on that, unless there's any additional discussion. I think we've had a rich discussion here, and we do have at least one other big topic. Yeah, Kathy.
As you know, I had concerns about this contract, but if we do all of those steps, I worry we're putting this off really far down the road. So Shelley, do you have a sense of how long that would take? Because I don't want to, I support a common assessment. I see lots of issues with this, but I don't want to be putting this off for a year.
No, these aren't, these aren't steps. They're just an understanding. We need an understanding. So that could be accomplished in a work session if the district came prepared to answer our questions and explain it to us. I don't see this as being, you know, step one, let's talk about the financial implications. Step two, let's talk about privacy. Step three-
Think it could be accomplished in a work session?
Or two, or, you know, a study item, you know, information item, study action, you know, the normal process for going through this, which we have not done with this contract.
So it's not a rejection of the contract. It's asking for more information and discussion. But how long that will take is, is a pretty serious question.
It's a scheduling issue, probably.
Any other questions or comments? Nope. Okay. Laura, call the vote.
Could I have Shelley repeat the motion so that we know what we're voting on, please?
I move that we not approve this contract until the district has solicited input from DAC, SACS, and other community members, and until the board has a complete understanding of the strategic, legal, financial, and privacy implications of adopting assessments and/or surveys for purposes of social-emotional learning.
Shelley, at your convenience. Can I get a copy of that, please?
Yeah.
And then I'll take the vote.
Bell Val?
No.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Board members, if you have specific questions, I know you've asked a lot of them tonight. Superintendent did solicit those from you earlier, but I would ask you to get those in writing as soon as possible, so that we can get the questions answered, have the discussion, and get this contract back in front of us. Our next action item is 8.1, 2016 mill levy ballot language. Dr. Messenger, would you like to do a brief setup of this?
Sure. So, excuse me, it's on your agenda, in your agenda. You have a resolution, as promised, that regards this operational levy. So it's Resolution Number 16-28. It's also available for public review. And so included in that resolution, the latter part of that resolution is actual ballot language that we are bringing forward as a recommendation. And it talks about initiating this election in November. And if approved, the initial collection would be $10 million to support operational needs of the district, as are listed in the ballot language that involve funding for capital construction, new technology, existing technology upgrades, and maintenance needs of the district. And so it would be put into a supplemental capital construction and technology account, so that it could be accounted for. This language also allows for up to a four-mill collection over the life of this. This is a perpetual mill levy, if approved by the voters. And again, it would be voted on this November. It would be at the board's discretion to increase it as high as four mills at any time through the course of decision-making around budget development. Today's valuation of property in the Boulder Valley School District, a $10 million initial collection, would be about 1.7 mils. And so, under today's dollars, four mils would be in excess of $20 million. So this, we've talked about a few times. We had a work session on it last week. After much discussion, there was conversation about doing variations on this. And so I shared with you a communication on Friday that at your place, you have the very same resolution, and nearly the same ballot language, except that it does allow for controls that would only allow an incremental increase from where it starts at $10 million up to the four mils. So the question really would be to approve what's on the agenda, which includes the resolution that does not have that limitation, or consider amending the motion to substitute this other language. So that's what's before you. We think it's consistent with what we've talked about in our work sessions and planning. These, both versions of this have been reviewed by legal counsel. One of the things we stressed last week, because we really need the board to take action on this this evening, so that we can work with the county clerk and keep this moving forward. Our timeline is tight on this. And so to have to go back and get a second legal review would be time-consuming. So both of these have been reviewed. I would just offer, but initially, we're proposing, we think this is consistent where the majority of the board was last week, is the language that's presented in this option that's in the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Messenger. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 16-28. Moved by Jenny. Second? Not hearing a second. What happens then, Melissa?
Not before the board.
Yeah. All right. Would entertain a motion, then, to approve Resolution Number 16-28-B, which has the modified language.
Which is at your place.
Kathy, second? Got, that also would require a second. Tina, second from Tina. Okay. So the motion before us is the alternate language that was distributed to you in hard copy, 16-28-B. We've had a motion, a proper second discussion. Yeah, Tina?
And, and this question is directed to anyone at this table, but specifically really for Kathy and Bruce. From what you're hearing at the legislative, at the state legislative level, and, and really based on what I heard about school finance formula last year, and some ideas about changing some of the parameters, or some of the way the funding is distributed, I'm a little concerned about how our funding streams might change in a negative way over time. One of the things I was encouraged by, though, was that most of the policies, or the proposed piece of legislation I saw around funding, had a, at least a two-year runway on them. It seemed that they wouldn't go into effect. So for instance, if something were passed this spring, it wouldn't go into effect until the next year. And like with the charter school funding, it took two years for it to ramp up to the level it was supposed to. So my only concern with the wording in the second version, which puts the cap, is our, do you guys, first, do people foresee any risks for sudden changes of funding in the next 24 months that we would want to be able to be more responsive to? I don't personally see it, but I just, I'm really not as close as you both are.
I would just say, my observation is, to date, the legislature generally has worked pretty hard to hold harmless, so that if there are shifts in local valuation that cause hardship, they just dealt one with South Route, actually, it was through the state board. So I think there's a sensitivity to that. So if there was a significant turn, I think there would be a phased-in period to your comment. I actually think the greater risk is a recision by the state, and that would be across the board. And that would not, they've done it before. There was no gentle landing there. And so my worry, I mean, we're clearly supportive that this is what the board chooses to do. My worry is if we get two years-
And so obviously we'd be unable to recover more than what the one-mill would allow for if we did that, which might be what we want to do. It's just it would take your flexibility away in the event. I mean, you're obviously, you could be disciplined to only do one-mill a year, or half a mill a year, or two, or whatever you choose to do, but it would be your discretion. I, I just worry with state funding that we have less control than we would like about how this proceeds. So I'm, we, we were just talking informally before the meeting, I actually think the governor's proposed budget may increase the negative factor, which will pull some of the bottom down for us, and we won't see a cost of living adjustment. That's the bigger worry I have. But, I mean, if we have a mill, it'll be better than not having anything at all. Each year.
Well, the only concern I have is if inflation goes higher, that they wouldn't fund it because, and they found ways...
Which is the negative factor.
Which is, so I think we're saying the same thing. And a recision is also scary. But the, if I might, the reason that I proposed the cap is I just think it gives the voters a little bit of comfort because in this Tabor environment, people are used to voting a flat amount of money or a discreet amount. And, and I did a little research on my own, and I found that the city and county of Denver did a similar proposal to this, where they actually gave the city council discretion to raise the mill, but by a cer, but they limited to 6% of property tax increases. So your property tax increase, it wouldn't go up more than 6% a year. And it passed overwhelmingly because with that cap, the conservatives didn't really have a way to say, oh, you're just giving them a blank check, which I don't think the polling suggested anyone thinks we're not going to spend the money wisely. And I find myself in an interesting position because we could easily spend that $28 million today wisely and benefit all students. But in a Tabor environment that we're in, we aren't, we don't have that ability. So I thought that by stepping it up, it only takes us back, I mean, to your point, in two years, we're, we could already go up another mill each year, and we would be at where we would be in three years instead of two or something. So it just felt to me like it gave the voters some comfort. And I don't know of any other jurisdictions other than the city and county of Denver that's done that kind of flexibility to an elected body. So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Thanks, Kathy. Other questions, comments? Hearing Shelley?
Yeah, I know the polling was optimistic about this mill levy, but I have to say, when I've talked to people, I've been hearing a little bit different story from people that they're feeling very much like with the increase in assessed values and, and the bond tax hitting their, you know, hitting their tax bill that, you know, they're, they're feeling concerned about how much taxes they're paying. So when I take that with your comment the other day, Bruce, about how the state is, you know, could potentially redistribute mill levies from, you know, richer districts to other districts, you know, it makes me wonder whether, you know, I want to be asking voters to give us money that may not end up in this district. So, you know, I have a concern about that. So I think that, you know, taxpayers have been really generous to BVSD, and, you know, they're starting to feel the pain of that generosity a little bit. And, you know, last year when they got hit with the higher assessed values and combination with the bond, it was really a shock to their system. So I think, you know, with the economy starting to weaken a little bit, it looks like that maybe now is just not the right time to ask this year, is, is kind of what I'm feeling after processing, you know, everything. And I'm also concerned that, you know, and I've shared this already, that the ballot language, you know, isn't really as transparent as it could be, that, you know, people just don't, they may not understand this language. They may not know that we're talking about $27 million next year, not 10 million. There could be significant annual increases in their assessed value, which could make it even higher over, you know, the coming years. And it, you know, looks like we're going to be asking for this money indefinitely. So, you know, who knows what property values is, are going to do over time and how much taxes, additional taxes they'll be paying. So again, I don't think voters think in terms of mils. I think they, they think in terms of dollars. And so, you know, since I don't know what language we're going to be using in the blue book necessarily, I, I don't know if it's going to be clear enough and transparent enough for me to feel good about this language. And I also have said, and, you know, I still maintain that, you know, there's really been no proposal or commitment on, on the part of the district to, to use the freed-up funds that come from this to, to address the issues that our schools and our parents want addressed. And so, you know, I might be able to get behind it if I thought the result was going to be lower class sizes and more counselors or something, but I'm not seeing that at all in this, any evidence that that could happen. So for me, I don't know where this money's going, and I don't feel comfortable not being able to tell constituents that, yeah, you know, this money's going to go for this and this and this, so that they can feel comfortable that, you know, they're in agreement with that. So I'd prefer that we take this to voters, you know, not this year, you know, not after, right after we've asked for a big bond, and right when they're starting to feel like the economy's not doing so well. I just think it's piling on, so...
Thanks, Shelley. Other comments? Tom?
Thanks, Sam. I think my position here is that voters elect school board members and they trust the board to oversee the district. And I take that trust very seriously. And I don't want to recommend a, a tax increase, which is what I would do if I vote for this resolution, unless I'm fully convinced that we need it. And I'm not convinced we need it this year. Perhaps in the future, we'll have to see how things go. The factors that went into that for me are, you know, and Shelley mentioned some of them right there, you know, two years ago, nearly two years ago, half a billion dollars bond here that addresses a lot of the deferred maintenance upgrades for security and, and safety in our schools. So, you know, right now in that regard, and this what this operations tax is about, I think we're in pretty good shape this year. And, and I need to see that we're not, and we need it this year before I vote for it this year. And I haven't seen that. I believe also that we can focus our budget in a better way to provide more resources to classroom, which we're not doing. And I'd like to see our plan for doing that before we ask for more money. And that's, again, what Shelley mentioned about having a commitment for the dollars that this will supplant. So we'll be, this will free up money that we can use other places, 20, 30 million dollars, 10, 20, 30 million dollars depending on the year, that we can use in other places. How are we going to use that? There's no plan for that right now. I need to see that plan before I go forward and say I want to have more money to do something with. Here's what I want to do with it. I need to know that. The budget development model, I think, that for projections needs a lot more work and validation, verification, which it hasn't had. I think it's an important tool that we need to have and we need to validate as we go forward in time. And I, I think to have some community, community input, we have a lot of very smart financial folks in our community that could really grab into this and try to understand that model so that the community is on board with where we're going. And I, and of course, none of that's been done. So this is just a rush, rush thing to me is, you know, is approved, it's the last session, and, and, and I have feelings about how the state is, has surpassed the responsibility and put it back on the voters' back here. And, and, and it's not uniform for the state because not every district will be able to pass a mill levy override. So I want to be, like I said, you know, before respectful of our voters going forward. So I just don't support this at this time, Sam.
Okay, Tom. Kathy?
Well, I think the $10 million, Shelley, to your comments is a very modest ask, and I, and I get that they're hit, you know, property values when a property taxes when up and the pond hit at the same time, that it gives us a discretion, and so I think the $10 million is really modest. I have a quick question for Dr. Messenger, if I might. I'm new to this. How does the blue book get prepared? Who prepares that?
So I'm going to ask Leslie to comment on that, make sure it's totally accurate.
There's opportunities for both pro and con statements in the blue book, and so normally an outside entity would prepare that. But we usually, we can provide factual data, which is what we can provide, and estimates for that kind of information. And then the district can also put out factual information, and we could also project estimates for our taxpayers so that they have a good understanding of what we're asking.
And some of it's required from us.
Correct, and some of, yeah, go ahead. And some of it is required for us to provide.
Well, in the past, that's what we've done as well, right? We've, we've identified areas that the money could be used for in the blue book and in promotional materials, but that doesn't go in the bond language generally.
Correct. So what, I mean, so obviously if the board approves this tonight and we proceed as a part of an informational campaign to help inform the voters of both what they're voting on, tax implications of that, and also intended use of those resources could absolutely be agreed upon by the board and, and feed into the informational campaign, which is allowable. Not telling people how to vote, but what they're voting on could be done in addition to the blue book, pro and con, and then there may well be some of our supporters in the community that may run their own campaign. I think they're prepared to do that.
And we face potential budget cuts if we don't pass this and it doesn't get passed. Is that a correct statement, Dr. Messenger?
So we are, the present budget, the board, the budget you approved last June is based on, to balance it, to keep present services, which is about the same services. Previous year, we're funding that on $6 million of one-time funds. And so that's, needs to be addressed as we go forward, and the projections we shared with you on those assumptions indicates an additional $5 million shortfall that will occur in the next budget year, so the budget you'll work on next June. So unless things change significantly by the state, which I'm not optimistic about, is that I think we would look anywhere between a five and 10 million dollar reduction in the budget going forward before we get into the discussion of reallocation of resources. And so I don't think, under our present forecasting, that we've done, that we can maintain the same level of services unless, I'm confident to say we cannot maintain the same level of services unless we have some additional revenue. And right now, this seems like our only option available to the Boulder Valley School District, just to go to our voters and ask for some assistance on this operational levy. The $10 million initially would be very helpful to balance the budget.
And one more. So, Tom, to your point, yes, it's an equitable system, and that's the system that I have been fighting for many years, and it's the system that we live with, but I think that we can hold two thoughts in our head, which is what do our voters want for our, our children? And we're fortunate enough to live in a community where I think, we'll see where they're, where they vote on this, but I think Tabor requires us to ask because we don't have any other way to raise revenue unless we ask. So we can do what we need to do locally, but we also still need to continue, and I think Dr. Messenger has done this, I think all of us have in our own way continued to fight for a more equitable system across the state. Because yes, we are, as I know it, there may be one other district, but we're the only ones who are able to have this conversation. Many are having other conversations, many are not because they're not in a situation where they're able to, to even have this conversation with their voters. So I think that we do have an inequitable system, but we also need to ask our voters and continue to do what we can locally because that's the system that we have to be able to provide the best education we can. So I'm very sympathetic to that point. I just wanted to say that, so thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. Other questions, comments? If not, I would ask Laura to call the vote. We are voting on the motion to advance Resolution Number 16-28-B to the November ballot in the Boulder Valley School District.
The motion is to approve Resolution 16-28-B authorizing a mill levy ballot question for the November 8, 2016 election. Belval.
Yes.
Benford.
Yes.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion, board members. Let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to our study item.
Marquis. Myers.
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion, board members. Let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to our study item. Call the meeting back to order. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. Next item on our agenda is a study item, the Monarch High School Early College Application. Dr. Messenger?
Thank you, President Fuqua, members of the board and those in attendance. I'm going to do a brief introduction to this item. Dr. Jerry Anderson, Principal of Monarch High School, will take lead in this presentation. And there's a PowerPoint which is attached to your electronic agenda. There's also a summary of the application. So Jerry and her team, Dr. Anderson and her team, have been working on this for some time. And so what's before you, not tonight, but two weeks from tonight, is action on a resolution of support for this application. The application is complete and ready to be submitted to the state. This would be a formal support from the board and also would move this forward. I just want to, in my introductory comments, applaud Dr. Anderson and her team and Front Range for the work they've done to date. And that isn't just about completing this application, although when I looked at the application, that was a lot of work. But really, the long-term relationship we've had with Front Range and Community College opportunities for our students on the campus are incredible, and also off the campus. This will simply enhance these opportunities for the students at Monarch, serves as a great model for our school district as we would proceed, and also for the state of Colorado, I would argue. So I would ask Dr. Anderson to come to the podium, and she'll give you an overview of what this is all about. And I know that we'd be glad to answer questions. So, Dr. Jerry Anderson.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I have a number of people with me tonight that I'd like to introduce to you. I have Dr. Linda Curran, who is Vice President of the Front Range Longmont Campus, Rudy Sumter, who already has been working very closely with Front Range with our High School of Business, and I also, I'm Haf Marty Goldberg, who is working, he is the Early College Coordinator for Front Range. So they're with me tonight and here to, for support. So let me just kind of get started here. I have the presentation queued and ready to show you. So as a number of you are probably aware, Monarch High School already offers a number of concurrent enrollment classes with Front Range and with CU. And looking at the presentation here, we had students earn 700 credits through, 708 credits through CU Succeed, and that was just last year. Concurrent enrollment for the 2014-15 year with CU and Front Range, you're looking at the credits that students earned here in the presentation. And just to let you know, to give you a number, we're already on track for this first semester, students earning 400 college credits. So this is something at Monarch that is something that we do. A part of this program also is advanced placement. Students can earn college credit for getting certain scores on their advanced placement. And Monarch has been very aggressive and very, had very good results on the advanced placement tests that have been given to students here to four. So why would we move from doing what we've always done to moving towards an early college option? So students have already shown their proficiency, their ability to earn college credits. And right now, they can earn credits all over the place, and they transfer credits to college. But bringing it in line and making it a program where they can earn their Associate of Arts degree, where it's guaranteed transferable to any two, to any four-year college, four-year state college in the state of Colorado, is a very positive move. We don't want students just to enter college, we want students to complete college. And if you think about starting college in a very supportive environment, where you have your teachers and your peers and the support you need to get started, it's a very positive move for students. Some of the information that you find here in the data, when you look in the actual Early College application, I have linked some of the sources where this data came from, so you can further explore those sources and the sources that were put together to write those sources. So you can go a little bit more in-depth. But this is just some of the reasons why early college is a positive thing. When you talk about graduating from high school, we have, already have a very high graduation rate. But we want to get students, I guess you could say, their persistence, their resiliency up for staying and finishing college. And this program, we think, could really make that possible for students. Everyone always, you know, we talk about budget, and budget is a concern. And I wanted to put this slide in here early, although we're going to come back to this a little bit later with a little bit more explanation. So when you think about the cost per credit hour, this is the cost per credit hour, that we have the Colorado Opportunity Fund that every student has access to, which lowers the cost of the class. And then BVSD pays for these classes, but then they're reimbursed by Front Range Community College. So you can see the amount we pay, the amount that we reimburse. So there's no cost to the district. And that's what I want you to know. And it's really what we're already doing. So, so early college, it'd be a school within a school. There are two ways to have an early college. It can be an entire school that's established as an early college, or you can create a school within a school. For Monarch, we would want to create a school within a school. And here are some of the goals around our program. I mentioned resiliency. So we want to continue to be a great high school that graduates students with the success that we do already. But we want to give students more options and more exposure to what they can do in a post-secondary environment. We believe that students will be engaged and motivated, knowing that these classes count, and that they can use them as a springboard to finish their four-year degrees. And we think they'll be decreased at-risk behavior. You know, that students will be more focused on what it is that they wanted, where they want to go, and they'll be able to get there. And we're working closely with our Community College and our college system, have increased articulation, and really just get all of our students really ready for their post-secondary options. So over the last year, we have worked as a full team, everyone that you see sitting here, and I'll show you our team on the next page. We have worked closely, we've met every month, two hours, three hours, and sat down to hammer out every single piece of this articulation agreement. And we have also spoken with, I've met with my SAC, my PT SO, different members of, my Booster Club, my staff, my FAC, I've met with them, met with the whole staff, and talked about what are some of the things that could push this forward, what are some of the things that we need to work on to be sure that, you know, there are no barriers to us going here, and identified that with staff. So there's been a lot of input. We've talked with parents in our High School of Business, we've talked with parents just in our school generally. What do you think? Would you want your child to be part of a program like this? So these are our core team members. You can see that we have people both here in BVSD and in Front Range, and we've worked very closely, as I was saying, to come up with this. So what is the program? We would give students the opportunity to earn an Associate of Arts General, an Associate of Arts in Business, and Associate of Applied Science in Business, while they're still enrolled in high school. And students would complete these classes within the four years. There would be some summer classes that students would need to take if they want to finish within the four years. Otherwise, they can do a fifth year at Front Range Community College and finish up their degree. So it's very gentle coming in. Students who start the High School of Business, they already start credit hours, they already are in concurrent enrollment classes at Front Range, currently have been since we started the High School of Business. 10th grade, they take a few more classes. 11th and 12th grade years is where most of the classes are, which, that's where students are taking most of their AP classes and their concurrent enrollment classes anyway, currently. But this kind of shows you how that's laid out. I just put this here for you to see the difference. So if you look at the blue, these are classes we already have with concurrent enrollment at Front Range. And when you look at the classes in green, these are classes that we would propose and write and have approved here in BVSD. But if you look at those classes, for example, public speaking, well, we offer public speaking. So what does that look like at the college level compared to the high school level? So these are, some of these classes are already part of our curriculum, but it's taking the learning to another level for students. Same here with these classes. You can see some of the classes we already offer, and then some of the classes that we would add. So already, students come into high school, and they complete an individual career and academic plan. And the idea is that we get students in this high school environment, they have their teachers, their parents, their peers, and they have this nurturing environment to start this college education. And they continue, as we are BYOD school, to use technology to enhance their learning. They have access to our current management system, we use Schoology, but they would also get access to the management system that they use at the university, so they could have access to resources, like library resources, in order to support their learning. We think it's very important to have that school-to-career connection. This is not just about isolated and about what's going to happen in high school. This is about what happens after high school. So we thought it was very important for students to work with a mentor, a building mentor, and an experienced employer, to kind of help a student understand, what would it look like when I would enter this field? What would it be like? How much money would I would make? How much education do I need? What is it like day-to-day? To do a little career exploration. And also, another thing a student could do as a part of their capstone is to create a service learning project where they create something to give back to their community. And then maybe it's about having a portfolio where you start looking at what you're learning and document your learning throughout your educational process. And I know that you realize this is part of where we're going as the state of Colorado anyway, but this is something here that would be very positive and a very important part of this program to demonstrate the learning that's taken place over the years that are students in school. With teachers, one of the things that staff brought up when we first started talking about this is, well, does that mean, you know, the students won't be taking our classes? Or they're already taking your classes? We already have staff that are qualified to teach. And it would be continuing to do that, and hopefully qualifying even more teachers to teach these classes. But these are the requirements that are necessary for a teacher to be able to teach a class that is a concurrent enrollment class with Front Range. And we have a number of qualified teachers in every subject area at Monarch, and we check that before we put together our plan of study when it comes to the classes. And in addition, students can actually just go to Front Range and take the class that they need to take in this Monarch Early College. So right now, we have a program we call Monarch Connect, and it's students mentoring students. So they come in, they kind of find out about, you can think about our 360 leaders, it's not about high school, what it's like ninth graders getting oriented. But after that, we've been getting to have conversations, what about some kind of independent study where students could actually interview someone who is in a career field that they're interested in? And as I was saying earlier, research what education it takes, maybe even do a site visit, find out what it's like to actually be in that career field. The Business Department already does something like that. Science Research Seminar already has a program where there's something very similar to that. But having that as a part of our Monarch Early College. One of the things I really think is very important is that we support students throughout this process. And outlined here, you will see some of the things that we already do. One of the things I think is really nice about this partnership that we have with Front Range is we want to make the services that are available at the Community College available to the students who are part of Monarch Early College. So it'd increase the number of resources that students would have access to, to help them as they're pursuing their, their education. So you'll see listed here some of the things that would be available to those students. Counselors, we want our, counselors are already signed alphabetically with, to students, they stay with them all the way through. They already are developing ICAPs with students. But now we want to offer a little bit more professional development for counselors and helping prepare students to take those next steps. And Front Range would offer that professional development. And also, we want to be sure that students have someone at school to talk to about their experience. You know, how are classes going? What support do you need to be successful in the program? And just being able to make them a partner in their own success through both the resources we have at Monarch and through the resources we have at Front Range Community College. Front Range has said that they'll be present, they'll have regular hours at Monarch to meet with students and support them. We have found a space for them that would be a dedicated space where they could be present. And when we have students selecting courses, Front Range has promised to send out more counselors to have eyes with students. Because you know, we, we have good counselors, but there's a lot of students who want to do a lot of things, and this would increase our capacity to give students college counseling. Here, there are a lot of things listed here, but what I want you to get out of all of the things that are listed here, it is about formative assessment. It's about seeing where our students are right now, and what are the things we need to do with our instruction to move them to the next level. So it's not just dumping a student in the college course saying sink or swim. It's okay, where are you? Where do you need to be? What do we need to do instructionally to get you where you need to be? So it's about being responsive to the learning needs of our students at the same time as we're preparing them to take these more challenging classes. It is also about professional development for our teachers. Our teachers would continue to be the BVSD employees that they are. They wouldn't be compensated for teaching classes at Monarch, but they would be required to do some additional professional development. We already do that right now at CU Succeed. Teachers who teach CU Succeed classes attend some professional development with CU. The same thing would be true with Front Range, where we're sure that not only are we meeting the BVSD standards, but that they're also learning the things that they need to learn within the Front Range content. So this is more information on professional development. It wouldn't diminish what teachers need to do here with BVSD. It would not take away from our professional learning communities, where we talk about learning. And it really just kind of increases the continuum. You know, we talk about being a K-12, pre-K through 12 system, and now we're talking about taking it just a little bit further with our articulation and knowing what the learning looks like a little bit further out. And that's what professional development would allow us to do, allow us to collect data, you look at our assessment data to inform instruction, and really to look at best practices both here and in the college courses. So staff would have formal mentoring if they were going to be a Front Range teacher, a Monarch Early College teacher. They would have an opportunity to work with the staff at Front Range, to do some cross training. And you'll see here listed some of the types of things that teachers could perhaps be asked to do, as well as some of the support that they could receive. So maybe going to an in-service in the fall and the spring. There's a technology conference that they could perhaps attend to further increase their use of technology, but at the college level. Access to departmental meetings, and even having access to an instructional coach that is really just looking at what's going on with the teaching and learning, and making it dynamic and making it, you know, even more effective. So we've already talked a little bit about the funding model, but this is kind of a summary of it here that we'll continue to do what we're currently doing when it talks about concurrent enrollment. We do think that if our concurrent enrollment increases, that we would want some of the money that comes back to the district to come to the school to administer the program, so that we could make sure we're doing all the things that we're doing that's necessary. Front Range is able to do this, my understanding is, because part of the COF funds comes back to them, they give part of that back to the district, and then we can use it to put back into the program. So to make it a self-sufficient program. And so we're here asking for your support. You know, we can just, you know, you can declare to be an early college. You could just say, well, we want to be an early college, we're going to offer these classes, we're already doing it, we're an early college. But we thought we would go the formal application route, because it allows you to give some benefits to students that we can't currently benefit, give them without harming the school. For example, if we become an official early college, we won't be penalized if a student wants to stay in school a fifth year and take classes. Right now, if we were to do that, it would count against our graduation rate. So those are some of the things that, you know, that's one of the prime examples of why be an early college, as opposed to just self-declaring to be an early college. And we're asking for your support, because we want the State Board of Education to know that we have your support going forward and doing this. And we are following exemplar programs across the state that's done that. And that's why And that's why we're appealing to you for your support. And we are open and we're here. Everybody's here to fill the questions that you have about the program, the work that we've done so far together. So please feel free to ask any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Board members, questions? We'll start with Richard and then go to Kathy. Can you direct those to Dr. Messenger or to Jerry or any of the members of the team?
To Dr. Anderson. Dr. Anderson, thank you for your presentation.
Long time coming. I think what you described here, you described, for me, social-emotional learning on steroids. Seriously, it seems to me like what you're doing is really focusing on student learning, student outcomes, everything that you mentioned here. I personally support it, and I'm hoping that my colleagues will support it too. But the question that I have is, is this going to be offered at other high schools? Are other high schools thinking about doing this? Because I'm thinking, for example, you mentioned AP classes. Are AP classes, they're not a requirement for kids to participate in it, are they?
No, they're not. So as we've designed this program, there are some classes that are concurrent enrollment classes. And there are some classes that are advanced placement classes where students could take an assessment and get college credit as a result of it. So some of the things we're building in, some of the things that our students are already doing. So, yes, so there are AP classes built into our overall program along with concurrent enrollment.
That would let them finish earlier than the four years, probably, is that?
It would let them finish, not their whole degree earlier than the four years, but it would enable them to get their associate's degree when they graduate.
Okay.
So both high school diploma and the AA?
So that would be their fast-forwarding with the earning the college credit piece.
So what about an average student that doesn't take AP classes, for example?
And that's one of the reasons why we want to do this formative assessment. It's really about continuing and to be very active in making our instruction responsive to where our students are. It's to make use of the Tutor Center they have at Front Range. It's to make use of our Tutor Center in a different way than we've made it available, and also access to mentors. For students can understand both here in school and outside of school, what is that learning about and what's significant about it? You know, I find that sometimes when students are not learning or don't demonstrate that they're learning, sometimes it's about interest. Sometimes it's about motivation. Sometimes it's about not understanding what they're doing and how it's applicable to what they might be doing in the future. And knowing those kinds of things and resolving those types of situations can really help motivate kids to want to learn and to seek the assistance that they need. So we want to be responsive, and we want to help them learn to ask for what they need to be better learners and to have resources available to them.
Yeah. It goes further in concurrent enrollment, this early college program that you're describing. I'm just thinking in terms of some of the undocumented students that were struggling in the past. They still are. I think that the in-state tuition, as it relates to undocumented students, helps a lot. I'm not sure, I know that we can't ask, but I'm sure that we know that there are some kids in that predicament. And I think that this would go a long way to helping some of these particular students get their four-year, their two-year degree by the time they graduate from high school. So I really applaud this effort, and I'm hoping that we can do it in other schools. You know, I'd like to see it at Arapahoe Ridge, for example, you know? How can we get that to happen at Arapahoe Ridge where most of your students there are Latino students? And also Boulder High and Centaurus, I mean, it's, to me, it's a great program.
If I might just comment on this, Richard's question about other schools. I think that what you know is that each of our high schools sort of have their area of emphasis. We have two high schools, Centaurus and Fairview that do IB. Boulder High has a depth, deep and wide, AP offerings, you know, New Vista is different. So, you know, I think I wouldn't say that it would necessarily go. With the concurrent enrollment and the opportunity to take college-level classes is absolutely present on all of our campuses. One of the things that you'll hear more about later in the fall around the graduation guidelines and pathways for students to success, we believe that can look different in different high schools across our district. And we believe this, as Jerry said, consistent with that overall effort. One of the things we recognize is that, and the research is pretty clear on this, students who start college-level courses while they're still in high school are more likely to go on to college and succeed. And so, and we've had great success with that. And yet, we still lose students. We lose students after high school graduation that don't make it to college. They plan to go to college, but they don't make it. And so, and we're looking at that as well. So we just say this fortifies it along with the work that the other high schools are doing. But, you know, the consideration of what we can do on concurrent enrollment at other schools will still be open for discussion.
Other questions? Kathy?
Just want to say thank you, Dr. Anderson, for sticking it out all evening with us. And that was just an awesome presentation, and I think this whole proposal is awesome. You have my support for it, and if we can help by showing up at the State Board when that presentation is, I'd be happy to do that. Do we have a timeline for implementation for this?
We do.
So our plan is, we wanted to come to you first. We wanted to submit our application to the State Board, and we'll find out the timeline for their approval. But at the same time, we need to start educating and packaging. So we want to be able to have how we market, how we get this information out, that this is going to be available. So, and then we want to have some parent meetings and some community meetings so that we can inform people about this is what this is, this is what this means, you know? And all the way to, so this whole entire fall, once we leave here, we want to get in action to do our next steps. So all of this fall to do those kinds of meetings. Come January, when students get ready to start course selections, we want to be prepared for them to opt into the program for their sophomore year. So it would really start the next school year. But in order to get them in the right courses, we have to start this way. So few things. Since we know we can self-declare an early college, we know that we can move forward. But at the same time, we're going to ask for the blessing from the State Board of Education to look at what we've done and what we've packaged. But we want to also just to start educating, communicating. And we're going to, we've had a series of meetings, like I said, monthly. We're going to continue our meetings to do all the fine print things. You know, you get your big overview. Now we want to go back and say, okay, exactly when we're going to do this, what does this form look like? So everything is in line for when we're ready to roll out. You know, so it's a year of, it's this year getting ready to go forward for the next year.
And I assume that this will be in line with the new graduation guidelines, even though you're starting with kids who are already in the system who are under the old grad guidelines. But will there be any changes you need to make to be consistent with the new grad guidelines when they come online?
I think we're really right in line with where we are with the graduation guidelines. When we look at the options that we're giving students to show their cumulative learning, the portfolio, the work experience, just even the AP classes and concurrent enrollment classes as part of that. So just about every element of this program is consistent with what we're doing for the high school, new high school guidelines, graduation guidelines.
The one piece I didn't see, I saw the capstone, but I didn't see anything about industry certificates. I guess that's something that would be more with Arapo campus or?
Well, we're already doing that. I didn't talk about it because it's something that, we have students already at Monarch that are eligible to earn certificates in business because of the number of classes that they've taken. So we didn't talk about it much, but because it's something that it's kind of already in place, our students are doing it. This will allow even more students to be able to do that. So absolutely, thank you for asking that question and allowing me to point that out, that we do that.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kathy. Let's see, how about Shelley, Jenny, then Tina?
Yeah, thank you very much for this presentation. I know I had a lot to learn about these programs. I understand that it's kind of a movement now in the United States, and there are, like, I think over 100,000 students that are part of early college programs right now. And from what I've read, there are some like pros and cons. So I just wanted to ask you, you know, what your perspective, you know, on those pros and cons are? And maybe just a few specific questions to start out with, like, you know, do you have an application process that kids have to go through to get into this program? Does it involve like reading and writing assessments or anything like that?
So what we've used so far for Front Range, we have used the Accuplacer. And you can feel free, if you want to add to this, we've used the Accuplacer, which is, just shows that students are college-ready. That's what we would continue to use. There is a new college assessment that's longer, but in our conversations with Front Range, we've agreed to continue to use what we've always used that students take now to go to Front Range.
Okay. And thanks. And what is the kind of like distribution of students that you see doing this? Like low-income versus not-low-income, you know?
So here's the really great thing about this. No money has to come out of the student's pocket. All they have to do is go to school, study, and earn a good grade. And I think that education about its availability and what you need to do to earn the credit is going to have even more students who are low-income students to take advantage of it. So right now at Monarch, you know, we're 7% free and reduced lunch. So we don't have a broad spectrum of free and reduced lunch students to talk about. However, we do have students who receive free and reduced lunch, who are in the High School of Business, who do take advantage of those programs that we have available in the school currently. And honestly, I really only expect that to increase because we're talking about making college accessible and affordable.
So right now, it's mainly a function of just not having that many FRL students to start with?
Yeah, but the ones who are there, they have access to what we already have there. We want to, I think it's very important that a student's potential is not limited by how much income that their family makes. And it's one of the reasons why I really embrace and like this program because it lets them just be the students that they are. Lets them go and study hard and work hard and get the benefits from their hard work.
So I know that there are many really high-achieving students at Monarch. And I'm wondering how many of those kinds of kids choose this program versus just going through sort of the regular high school experience?
You know, I think it's going to be a family choice and a student choice. It's just like we have CU Succeed classes, we have advanced placement classes, we have advanced classes, and we have regular classes. And students choose different pathways and different interests. So right now, probably the most aligned program, we're talking about our High School of Business. A number of different students within that program would jump on this because it's what they're already doing, and it just gives another stamp to what they're doing. I believe that there will be students who will choose to take AP classes and not enroll. But what we're doing is giving them an option to say, if you want to earn your associate's degree in high school, you can do this, and here's the pathway, and here's how you can have that happen with minimal cost to your family.
But do you know statistically, like, how many really high-achieving students do this sort of thing? That's what I'm asking, like, what's, what does the kid look like who's in your program typically?
In the High School of Business, it really is across the board. We have the AP everything stereotypical students, but that's not really the bulk of the students who go into high school. Really, they all have one thing in common, though. They want to get into a good business college.
Okay, so this is just business-focused. I didn't really realize that. It's not like?
Well, for example, I get this.
Yeah.
But we want to expand it so that it's available to all the students, not just the High School of Business students.
Exactly. So we're talking about a general Associate of Arts. And then you have the Associate of Arts in Business and the Associate of Applied Science in Business. So you have both, you have all of those degrees. So we are expanding a little bit outside of what we've traditionally have done to make it more accessible. Because if I, I think if I were to come and say, well, parents, we're going to allow an Associate of Arts degree, but only if your kid is in the High School of Business program can they access this. I think that would be very limiting, and I think that it wouldn't be fair to students who aren't in that program. And I think all students should be able to take advantage and pursue their interest and what they want to do in a post-secondary environment.
So that's the way it is now, but that's not the plan?
Exactly.
Yeah. Can I just ask a couple more questions? So I know one of the criticisms of these kinds of programs, not yours particularly, because it seems like yours is extremely well-thought-out. But, you know, one of the criticisms is that, that really what kids are doing in these programs is sort of remedial college work and that in the end, they're not really prepared for the rigors of a four-year college experience after having gone through this. Not as prepared as they might have been had they stayed in a really enriched high school experience where they're doing summer reading programs and art programs and STEM. And so there's this debate about whether, you know, kids are more prepared or less prepared to go into a four-year college after going through a program like this. And I don't know the answer. I'm just wondering what your perspective on that is. Do you know what I mean, the difference between those two?
Between students being in a traditional high school and in an early college?
Yeah, being in a traditional high school, going through a really good high school program, are they more prepared for college than a kid who might go into this AA program and end up doing more remedial college kind of work?
So I guess I should first emphasize that our students don't do remedial college work. If you want to look at our High School of Business scores, our students score nationally. They take an assessment that is given to students across this entire country and score in the top percent based on their college concurrent enrollment classes that they're currently in. So I don't know where the word remedial comes in because it's not a remedial course. They have, they are expected to master the competencies that they would master in a college course. They have that curriculum. But what we're talking about is in a supportive way. You know, it's just like, you can choose to teach things in a number of different ways. You can stand up and you can deliver a lecture, you can make it hands-on. You can do inquiry, you can do all different kinds of things. What that student gets out of that lesson depends on what you put in that lesson. And so we're just trying to make our students have rich learning experiences. So it's not about dumbing down college. It's about ramping up high school and getting them prepared for this transition. And I guess that would depend on the program, and I guess it would depend on the kid. But at Monarch, as I see our kids currently and all the work they do right now, I can't see this making our high school less of a high school than it is. It's still going to be Monarch High School. These kids are already doing this work. We're rewarding them for doing this work and saying, you're going to walk out of here with more than just your high school diploma because you're already doing the work. You're already putting forward the effort that you need to.
Well, it does seem like it's very well-thought-out, and I think it looks like a great partnership with Front Range.
Thank you.
You know, I guess I would really want to look at it as more of a pilot and see how it goes, you know, before I would run and roll it out to every school in the district. But it certainly looks like you're taking a great shot at it.
Thank you.
Wish you a lot of success.
You asked a good question, Shelley, that I don't have to ask now. So I wonder, so if students were to opt for, say, the five-year program and for some reason not complete the Associate Degree, would they, they still, they wouldn't lose their high school diploma, would they?
They don't lose their high school diploma, and they don't lose their college credit either.
Okay, okay.
Because they have, they've earned that, you know? And what I really like about my conversations with Front Range, we've talked about the flexibility because we understand that they are high school students and that, you know, although they have to opt in before they begin the program, it might take some students longer, some students might want to go faster. We want to be responsive to our students.
So, thank you. And this really does sound great. I'm fully supportive. So, and then one more question, which is that you talked about a capstone project. Is the capstone required as part of this?
You saw three different options in there, and yes, we want one of those capstones to be there, to be available. So when you looked at those three different options, and we wanted to make it something that everybody could do, so it's not limiting to students. So you're talking about working with a mentor and discovering, looking at your career field, learning more about that. You're talking about designing a service learning project. You're talking about getting, keeping a portfolio of your learning. So we want to structure things so students can do one of those things. And yes, because we want this not just to be, go take classes and get ready to go to a four-year college. We want this, students to be able to demonstrate. You know, you talk about metrics, you talk about measuring. What better way to see that students have learned and have brought their learning together than to do some kind of capstone project at the end?
Okay, but those are, but I'm just going to clarify. So we don't yet require a capstone for all high school graduation. I didn't, we didn't do that.
We do not yet require that.
Okay.
One of the things I would just add to Jerry's comment, she articulated very well that this aligns nicely with the early work we're doing around graduation guidelines. More to come on that for you. Capstone experiences will be an option for students beyond this project as a part of our graduation guidelines. So, and so we'll bring that to you as a part of our conversation this fall.
I just want to make, I just want to make sure I hadn't.
Yeah, I mean, New Vista is probably the one that we do more wall-to-wall with that. But we'll like to provide these kinds of options going forward as an option, not a requirement.
Just making sure I understood what I was asking.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it, and I appreciate your taking time to be here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for this presentation. It was really thorough, and I appreciate all the detail to the implementation and what the outcomes are. The one question I have is, there are a couple services that it looks like you might be expanding, like the Tutoring Center, and it looks like there might be some administrative overhead. Would we expect some kind of budget implication beyond the course credit and also the course reimbursement that we get from FRCC? And also, you mentioned that we might need some of the money that's paid back to the district of the 105% reimbursement. What kind of numbers are we looking at? As you, you have sat through this whole meeting, so you know that we have some very serious budget issues. And so anytime we're looking at expansion, I think I'm a little, I really want to ask the questions. Can we afford this, and can we afford it for five to 10 years?
So I did prepare for you a document called Budget Implications of the Monarch High School Early College, and so that you can also peruse. So as you see in the last- So as you see in the last slide that I have up here, I say approval of the designation of an MHS staff member as a program coordinator. So one of the things that I don't want to do is to say, okay, you're teaching an early college class, so I'm just going to dump more work on you to get done. I want someone who can take care of the administrivia stuff outside. It might be an extra duty contract, it's not going to be, for right now for us, as we get this started, we're talking about something like that. Maybe my, one of my assistant principals, instead of doing discipline, you know, can spend some time working on early college and, and being a liaison with our early college. So really just kind of redoing what we do and taking, I don't have a dollar figure, but extra duty contracts, I want it to be flexible because I don't want that to stop us from being able to go forward. Right now, what you'll have happening at Monarch is my teachers take on this responsibility and then the district does the next work, but they do the recruiting, they get all the initial paperwork filled out, then they get it to the district, they're all, they're doing that work. I just think it's a lot to ask them to do on top of what they're already doing instructionally. So if I can have someone who gets some type of extra duty contract to spend some time doing that, I think it would be valuable. I think it coming out of the 5% makes it still a net zero, so we're still not costing the district more funds. So I wouldn't want to do anything that would be beyond what we're already earning for the program.
I would just add that some of our conversations with the graduation guidelines is consistent with what Jerry just described. As we change our focus and have higher expectations for our students and create that pathway to college and career pathways, how we organize our staff resources and kinds of supports we provide may need to change, which could cause some reprioritization of, of how we invest our resources. And so more to come on that, but that's some early conversation we've had around, as we go forward with the new guidelines. So this will be consistent with that.
Other questions or comments, board members? Yeah, Richard?
I just have a, a question around the Accuplacer. If they don't pass the Accuplacer, they don't get into early, into the early college program at Monarch?
Let's just, how do we handle that right now? If a student takes the Accuplacer and they don't do well in it, which is not a problem that we've encountered really at Monarch, to be honest with you?
It hasn't happened. All of the students have taken Accuplacer and qualified to do college.
But the Accuplacer is also used to determine whether they need remediation too, correct?
Yes, and we haven't found any students who needed remediation or participated in our current enrollment course.
And, and my hope is that if we did find that they need remediation, that I would rather find it out now while they're still in high school, while they have the resources and the support to continue their learning, then I would wait till they get out of high school, then take an Accuplacer and then find out they need remediation. I'd like to channel our sources within the school to address those learning needs while they're there.
Yeah, just, just a question and maybe it should be in the form of a FYI. Currently in the Boulder Valley School District, how many high school graduating students need remediation when they go into higher ed?
Yeah, we, there is a report for Colorado colleges, it's produced annually, which, I can't remember when, we shared it recently, but we can re-up that, so we do have that data, Richard, by school, by district, across the whole state of Colorado, as accurate as it can be based on Colorado transitions. But it's a number we pay attention to, obviously, our high school principals pay a lot of attention to that. So having them graduate, having them pursue something after graduation and then having them be ready for that when they get there is all part of. So some of what we hear in the graduation guidelines is around student success and success for life after high school. To what that means to us is not just walking across the stage for graduation, but really for what they want to do next and can do next. And so that, that remediation's important, career, career choices, college choices. Again, we just believe this kind of program, early college, just sets more and more of our students up for success. But we do have that data, Richard.
Thank you. You know, I did a lot of work with Lieutenant Joe Garcia when he was running the Department of Higher Ed and he convened a number of meetings as it relates to the pipeline to higher ed, trying to find out where the leaky spots in the pipeline is. And he presented some statistics that were very, very alarming, especially for Latino kids, that of, out of 100 student, out of 100 kids that graduate from high school, Latino kids that graduate from high school, probably eight make it to the very end. And that's pretty alarming, you know, if, when you look at those particular statistics. And I'd like to see more around how do we work with our Latino kids? And I think this early college model, I think would work well, but, but again, you know, as you mentioned, some of it would probably be a whole lot of remediation. So I think we've got to get past that and see what we can do at the high school level before they even get there, so.
Exactly. What can we do while they're still in high school to be sure that they're better prepared? And that's what I really see our partnership with Front Range giving us an opportunity to do. You're taking this Accuplacer, you know, middle of your ninth grade year, we know where your strengths and weaknesses are from that standpoint, what you're college ready for already. I just think it's just going to give us an opportunity to have more information to inform instruction. And I think that effective teachers, that's what they do. They get the information they need and they adjust what they teach in order to be responsive to what students need. And I feel like those are the teachers that I have at Monarch and they would be willing to do that for the benefit of students.
Yeah, Tina?
I'm just going to respond to your comment, Richard. The remediation rates are also published by CDE every year, so you can just Google CDE remediation and they're always there for you, so.
It was really Joe Garcia that built up what you described to get these reports generated. So, so Sam Arby in town is to bring this back as consent action in two weeks or action for the board to take on the resolution. So what we're asking you, you've seen it, it's in your packet. So really what we're asking the board to do is approve the resolution, the application's ready to go forward. As Jerry described, there are details, they're still working on, but it's ready to go to the state board. But this was just a study item, so we'll come back for your action in two weeks is our plan.
Great. I think Shelley has an additional question?
Bruce, it seems to me unusual that this is coming in the form of a resolution. Isn't, why is that? Couldn't we just make a motion that, you know, that you would be responsible for continued implementation of this program, like the last bullet point on the resolution? Or is there some reason?
I think that what Jerry described, this earlier, Tina had asked the question of me also, is that this would be a part of the packet of the application that would go to the state board and?
And they need a resolution?
Well, I think it strengthens the application. Showing the full district support of this application is the, the dressing that would go on it. So if I could, Sam, I just want to recognize Jerry's leadership and the Monarch staff and our partners in Front Range. We do a lot of work with them always and, and this is a real commitment of time and effort to get to this place and I think it's a real, you know, recognition of that good work that's happened at Monarch. I've attended each of Monarch's graduations, I believe, since I've been here, because it happens on that Friday night, when I can get to as many as I can and, you know, they celebrate success every year. And the graduates do really well as they leave Monarch High School and I just believe this is going to be one more step in the direction. And Jerry's leadership and her staff and, and again, in this case, partnership with Front Range has made that possible. So I just want to publicly recognize our partners in this.
Absolutely. And I think it's safe to say?
Open or not, but I think she deserves it.
Okay, yeah. Round of applause.
Thank you.
I think you got a favorable reception for your program.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to our proposal.
We appreciate the work you're doing on behalf of Monarch students. Board members, we have one other item, which is agenda setting. Any issues right now for agenda setting? Kathy?
My every board meeting requests to get an update on the bond and the, and CBOC. I understand CBOC didn't meet last week and so I'm hoping that we can get an update on that.
I think tentatively scheduled for October, CBOC schedules when they, but I think that the plan is probably the October meeting is my understanding of talking to Susan. So they will convene soon and?
They, they were scheduled to meet last week and that meeting was canceled, so I just want to make sure that we can stay up to date since the headline was, as you saw,[1703.33]